Twenty ninth, two thousand and eighteen. And Barb, could you please call the roll?
Certainly. Board Chair Lehman.
Here.
Vice Chair Pelletier.
Here.
Treasurer Pearson.
Here.
Clerk O'Loughlin.
Here.
Director Hepner.
Here.
Director Patachak.
Here.
Director Stivland.
Here.
You have quorum.
Thank you. Could we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our district mission, Director Patachak.
Mission. The mission of Stillwater Area Public Schools in partnership with students, family, and community is to develop curious individuals who are active and engaged leaders in an ever-changing world by challenging all students as they travel along their personalized learning pathways.
Thank you very much, and I have the privilege of reading our board goals tonight. The Stillwater Area Public School Board of Education ensures outstanding learning opportunities for the social, emotional, and academic growth of every student in our school district through authentic partnerships and meaningful communication with our community, parents, and students. Every decision is made with a commitment to equity for all students and for future generations impacted by our actions. We provide our stakeholders with regular updates on student achievement along with continual plans to enhance student learning in our district. We ensure that our systems of management and oversight are clearly defined. We invite ongoing dialogue and partnership with our community to learn from their knowledge and to enhance our learning for our students. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed. Superintendent report.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to start this evening with responses to the last open forum. And the first response, we had quite a few, so I ask for your patience. The first is a response, and it's actually in concerns to the, response to the concerns presented by Ms. McCready at the last board meeting, and this we have checked with our legal representation. At the last board meeting, Ms. McCready presented concerns related to information provided by the district as part of a response to a data request related to the mediation between the district and Voice 834. In her presentation, Ms. McCready questioned whether the district had, in fact, received a written data request for the information. To clarify, on November twentieth, two thousand and seventeen, the district received a written data request from a community member requesting in part all written communications from 834 Voice or its attorney to ISD 834, its board members or its attorneys related to the litigation against the school district by 834 Voice. To restate the information that was previously provided to Ms. McCready, the information provided to this community member was obtained through our legal counsel and provided to the community member in response to that written request. Ms. McCready also raised concerns that she believed the district violated an express agreement to keep information confidential. She is mistaken. The confidentiality agreement signed as part of the mediation process was not an agreement that the parties will keep the documents confidential. It is an agreement that materials shared during that process cannot be used in evidence at trial. That is the sole purpose and reach of the confidentiality agreement. Lastly, Ms. McCready requested that the district clarify why the initial settlement offer provided to the community member was deemed acceptable to be made public. The district doesn't have the option to decide whether information is confidential or not under the Minnesota Data Practices Act. By statute, all information collected and maintained by the district is public unless classified otherwise in the statute. The statute does not classify as non-public the mediation materials which were disclosed. We do not have the ability to make it non-public by creating a contract, and we can agree to do something that isn't in compliance with the Data Practices Act. The next is a response to concerns presented by Ms. Hayner regarding George Hepner not responding to a request. On November sixteenth, two thousand and seventeen, one week after a request at the board meeting on November ninth, two thousand and seventeen, a response was sent to Ms. Hayner via email at the email address on the file in district. The response included answers to each of the nine questions she had posed, as well as a copy of the district's records retention schedule. No notification was received that the email was undeliverable. On March fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, we learned that the email we had on file was not the correct email and received an updated email address. In light of the new information, the original email was resent again to Ms. Hayner later that same day. We have received no notification that the email was undeliverable and assume that it has been received. Sid Stefan, the owner of the Stagecoach Bus Facility, came and visited with us and offered a tour of the current bus terminal. Board members toured the space earlier this week. Two parents of our Anderson Elementary School came forward and shared their concerns for safety at the school, and we met with the parents to flush out some of the specifics of their concerns and develop an understanding of what they were, and then we discussed possible solutions for the remainder of the school year. Those solutions include staffing increases, training for our staff, increased levels of communication, and ensuring second steps of our, ensuring fidelity of second steps and responsive classroom, which are two of our curriculums that we use within the district to support our students. Mira White asked us to look closer at our standards with dyslexia and how we serve students, and just earlier this evening, before the board meeting started, we had a full session on our reading and literacy curriculum and how we are addressing the needs of our dyslexic students now and in the future. Tina Riley shared with us the need for more social-emotional learning within the district. I don't think there's any of us that wouldn't agree more with her on that. We do have in back some handouts of what we're currently doing. Stillwater is known as one of the places that are, few places that actually has a pre-K-12 social-emotional learning framework in place, and we have many things in place for our students. But I think the most that you can help us as students and parents and teachers is to contact your legislature, because we do need more funding for the social-emotional needs of our students. And let's see here. Several parents also came to us and shared that they would like us to reconsider start times and not change our start times, and the board voted last week not to do that. So those were the concerns, and for those of you, if you haven't seen it, in back here is the E-12 Social-Emotional Learning Framework, and we have what's happening at our elementary, middle schools, and high school, and then resources, and that's on the back table for those of you who might not have seen that. On another note, we are meeting with all schools to outline the Portrait of a Graduate work and our adaptive planning process. Principals are engaging with their staff to provide insight and feedback. We've met with a few of our schools, the high school, Brookview, and, trying to think, Lake Elmo so far, and so we'll be meeting with all of our schools to gather insight from them on that process. We also have an invitation to go to the city councils to share that same process and let them know what we've finished with our accomplishments for the Bridge to Excellence and our forward planning for the Portrait of a Graduate. Monday is the Partnership Plan Award Dinner, and I know that Chair Lehman may want to say something also, but I'd like to recognize the folks that received the award this year. It's an honor, and it's always one of my favorite things to go and attend the Partnership Award Dinner. Folks who nominate a teacher or a staff member share their story about how that person made a difference in their life, and then we also hear from the teachers or staff members who are honored. Julie Hadad is a teacher at Brookfield Elementary. Stan Spain is a special education teacher at Lily Lake. Glenn Bachner is science and agriculture teacher at Stillwater High School. Nicole Malone is a math teacher at Stillwater Middle School. Tim Foster is one of our retired sixth-grade teachers. Jeff Ranta is a retired biology and astronomy teacher. Terry Randazzo is our birth-to-three-year, working with our little ones at the Early Childhood Center. And Tate Shoverline is our behavior specialist for all district schools. We congratulate all of the award winners and look forward to spending Monday night with them. Let's see, I have a few more things. Just a reminder that there's no school for students tomorrow on Friday. And then finally, I'd just like to share really quickly with you, our administrators engaged in something that's called Shadow a Student Challenge, and it's an empathy activity that comes out of Stanford D-School, and some of you remember that we are partnering on design thinking with the Stanford D-School, and it focuses on seeing a school, a student's experience in school through the student's eyes, and it helps leaders find meaningful ways to improve the school experience for our students. And I'm going to let Dr. McDowell just share a little bit more about the process with you.
So the way the process works with that is we've asked all of our administrators, assistant principals, principals, directors, coordinators, human resources, and finance to select a student and shadow a student for a day, which they've all been in the process since about February nineteenth is when it kicks off. We're part of about thirteen hundred educators nationwide, forty-five states, forty-nine countries all take part in this now. As Superintendent Pontrelli said, it's a piece that's done in conjunction with Stanford D-School, as well as a company called IDEO out of California as well. This next coming week, all of the administrators will be coming together to kind of go through and find common understandings of what they experienced while they spent the day shadowing. Krista Keister and her team have a article in their next publication that'll explain in detail four experiences that different people had, and we're hoping that that will play into our Portrait of a Graduate work, as well as our school improvement planning for next year, getting a better idea of what is it like to truly be a student pre-K through our transitions program.
Thank you.
Thank you. Exciting stuff. Int introductory items, we have the student report. Annabelle or Ava, who gets to go first?
I'll start tonight.
All right.
Good evening. My name is Ava Okanovich, and I'll be giving an update regarding sports and activities going on at the high school as we have returned from a very relaxing spring break. Spring sports are underway. Tonight, the boys' track and field team has an indoor meet at St. Thomas, and synchronized swimming has a meet in Forest Lake. If the snow is cleared from the track and if the weather allows it, the girls' track team will have their first meet against Roseville on Tuesday. In other news, student council ironed through details regarding the ninth and tenth grade formal that will be held in the PAC on Friday, April twenty-seventh, from seven-thirty to eleven p.m. Tickets will be on sale starting on April ninth and will be available through FIPAY. Tickets are currently on sale for the Stillwater Area High School's spring musical production of Bye Bye Birdie. Performances will be on Friday, April sixth at seven p.m., Saturday the seventh at two and seven p.m., and on Sunday, April eighth at two p.m. Tickets must be purchased on the new online ticketing website at showticketsforyou.com. Looking ahead, the Spring Wind Symphony Concert will take place on Tuesday, April seventeenth at seven-thirty. Tickets for that concert will go on sale April first at eight a.m. on ShowTix for You as well. And that's all I have for now, and Annabelle.
Hello. My name is Annabelle Gregg. With spring break just wrapping up, academics at Stillwater are slowly finding themselves back in the regular flow of things. Next week is chock full with exciting things. Our seniors will attend class meetings on Tuesday, while our juniors will be taking the ACT. Sophomores, the MCAs, and our freshmen will have an awesome opportunity to learn about chemical and mental health in the morning on our campus, and then head to the Science Museum or Minnesota Zoo to enhance their science and math-based knowledge. On Thursday, March fourteenth, I had the pleasure of walking out with my fellow peers at Stillwater as we participated in the National Walkout. As I stood in silence for seventeen minutes as my classmates led us in a vigil and remembrance for the seventeen lives lost in the horrific Parkland shooting, I was left in awe. Sometimes teenagers have a reputation for lacking empathy, understanding, or action. On March fourteenth, these preconceived notions were abolished. In this moment, a little more than a quarter of an hour, my life was changed. My classmates were no longer desks filled next to me or faces passing in the hallway, but they were brothers and sisters in a battle that is becoming so much bigger than us or what anyone could have hoped for. Fear binds us and unites people in unimaginable ways. The students at Stillwater are afraid, not as a result of security issues at Stillwater, but because we are growing up during a national epidemic. There are painful conversations filling mealtimes, mothers and fathers sharing news that no elementary school child should have to fear. My classmates are having audible conversations as to the likelihood of survival based on their placement in the classroom. The back of a corner is no longer a place to go unnoticed by a teacher. But this is where we are today. I appreciate the actions that have been made to make students feel more comfortable. Kind and comforting words shared by staff, parents, and community members do not go unnoticed. You would think that growing up in the twenty-first century would be made a breeze with the new technology and more access to information than ever before, but today, students are struggling with concerns that past generations just simply did not wrestle with. But from here, we move forward. As our district continues to heighten security, education, and future plans, I urge you to seek student input in all that you do. We are responsible, hungry for change, and more capable than ever. Thank you.
Thank you very much. District recognition tonight. We have two items, and I'll turn it over to Superintendent Pontrelli.
Yes, we have our wrestling team, and then we have our adaptive sports team. Can we have our wrestling representatives come forward first, please?
Thank you.
Just a short snippet to read and give you information, and then we'll have time for some comments and questions. The wrestling team had another successful season, reaching state tournament for the second straight year. Rich Keller's been with the program for twenty-eight years, and seventeen of these were his head coach. Mr. Keller retired after the season, leaving the program in excellent shape for the future. We'd like to take this opportunity to recognize all the hard work and commitment he's given to the wrestling program and our Stillwater Pony students and athletes. We have Reed Ballantyne, who became the third Stillwater wrestler to win back-to-back individual state titles. Jack McPherson and Dustin Dalblum also accomplished this feat during their careers. Reed is only a ninth grader and holds extreme potential. He lost his only high school match during his, he only lost one high school match during his two-year career to date, and even more amazing, he won his championship match after being injured in the semifinals. Congratulations to everyone.
Well, I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity. For twenty-eight years, able to work in the district that I grew up in and wrestled in and give me that chance to do that, it's not very often that that comes about, and to have, over those years, the kids that I've had wrestle and work with, it's been amazing in Stillwater. So, thanks for the school district and that. Reed's probably the most humble wrestler I've ever coached, and ninety-four and one over that, or ninety-one and one over two years as an eighth and ninth grader, so he has a chance to do something very, very special that not a lot of kids have, so. Leaving that with just a few words from Reed, and that's about all we're going to get.
I guess I'm thankful to have a lot of good coaching, you know, bring some new coaches in. He's still going to be around, which is going to be nice, and I just think the program can go up from here, and a lot of good kids in the youth. Yeah, I don't know.
Reed, how long have you been wrestling?
I've been wrestling for eleven years, and hope to wrestle through college, so seven or eight more years, I hope.
Director Patachak.
Yeah, I can't miss this opportunity. Reed, as a former wrestler and coach myself, what do you attribute your success? Ninety-nine, ninety-one and one is pretty remarkable.
I guess I just...
I'll help him answer that. He has a gymnastics background, so he's, when he's interviewed and talked to other people in the couple of times that he has, one of the questions that they've asked both times was, you know, what makes you so good? And he said, "I just like to wrestle." As I say, he's humble. People ask, you know, "Miss practice?" No. He loves to practice. He loves, he doesn't worry about the awards and stuff. He just wants to compete, and I think that's really cool. So, being able to spend that much time, he's traveled all over the country, and thanks to his parents that allow, that sacrificed to do that, he's been from east coast to west coast wrestling, so.
Are your parents here?
Yeah.
Well, we should recognize them. Congratulations. Anyone else? Well, we'll see you next year at the same time, so.
Great job. Great job. We'd like our adaptive hockey team representatives to come forward. This was an exciting year for our adaptive sports programming. We offered our first cooperative adapted hockey team, and it was an opportunity for Stillwater and Motto-Medi School students this year. John McAllister led the team to a three-eleven record, and the team won their first playoff game before losing to the eventual state champion, St. Cloud. The team made improvements every day. John Lindberg was honored by being named all-conference. Dylan Hill and Daniel Donahue were named all-conference honorable mention. Welcome. Thanks for being here.
So I just want to say, it was a pleasure to coach the kids this year. We did make quite a bit of progress from the start of the year to the end of the year with the very limited, we only had five kids from Stillwater and three from Motto-Medi, and we were, you know, playing against teams that had fifteen, twenty kids. So, they played a lot. The nice thing was, no matter what the score, even though there were many games we were outmatched, they did not give up, and they played with the same intensity throughout the whole game. So, I'm proud of what we did and look forward to next year.
Even more students next year, right?
Yes, hopefully.
Spread the word.
A bigger roster, yes.
Nice job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is open forum. We have twelve speakers tonight, so I will read our open forum guidelines. Stillwater Area School District welcomes input from citizens as community involvement fosters better decision-making and improved learning experiences for all students. While comments and questions are welcome during open forum, the law prohibits the board from discussing concerns about individual employees or students in a public meeting. We will stop the proceedings immediately if employee or student privacy issues are raised and direct the speaker to forward comments regarding individual employees or students to the superintendent. Because we are modeling civil discourse for our community, speakers must present their testimony in a respectful manner. Vulgarity, character attacks, malice, or specific complaints identifying staff or students by name or implication will not be permitted. The board will not deliberate, discuss, or engage in conversation with speakers during open forum. However, the board may ask administration to review the concerns presented. I would ask that when I call your name, if you would come forward to the podium, state your address, and you will have five minutes to address the board. Director Pelletier is our timekeeper, and so at the end of five minutes, she will let you know, and we'll just ask that you either wrap it up so we can move on. Like I said, we have twelve speakers tonight. So, with that, the first speaker on the list is Sarah Letourneau. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, school board members. Tonight, you have a very important decision to make, and I come here somewhat unprepared because I didn't know what was going to happen in the learning session. About a month ago, we asked that the vote on the literacy curriculum be tabled because we didn't believe it provides what our children who suffer from dyslexia, which many call it a disability, in our family, we call it my daughter's, that's her superpower. And I say this for many reasons, but tonight, you have to vote on whether or not to approve a large sum of money for a literacy curriculum that will, I believe, will leave out about fifteen percent of our students who have dyslexia. We have been in collaboration with the school district. We thought we were on a path. We thought we were being, you know, part of this, and I don't know what to say. I'm disheartened that we are here today with a curriculum that I have spoken to several dyslexia specialists in the state who don't believe it meets the needs of our learners, of our dyslexic learners. We asked the school board to have a learning session, to bring in some specialists. Let's get educated about this. It is new for schools. I understand that. I have been lobbying around this issue since my daughter was diagnosed. I didn't know what dyslexia was. It's not easy, but I know my daughter suffers. She suffered all through elementary school. Yes, it was before this administration's time. My daughter still suffers. She has gotten tutoring that we pay sixty dollars an hour out of pocket for tutoring. She has gone away for the last two summers to a school to get intensive support at the cost of seventy-five hundred dollars each summer, plus travel, plus not having my daughter We, as parents, this is what we have. We have to pay out of pocket. We have paid that. My daughter just took the ACT Aspire. I'm heartbroken. This was a test that the district gave her. In English, she's in the fifteenth percentile. In reading, she's in the twenty-fifth percentile. But the amazing part, she's in honors English, and she has a B in the class right now. This is why I want specialists here to talk and to educate before we move forward with this big sum of money we are asking taxpayers to pay. I was hoping we were going to get that tonight, and we were going to have somebody say, "Look, if we do this, if we go down this path now for the next few years, and then we introduce this," you know, whatever it is, I need to know that we are on the path to excellence for these kids. We are talking about reading in K-3. We're not talking about anything for my daughter. We're paying that out of pocket, and that's where this becomes an equity issue. My daughter's getting it, but she still struggles every single day. Do you know what she has to do to get a B in honors English? It's heartbreaking what she gives up to do that. When we began this, we set out on a path to be the district that kids with dyslexia in the East Metro would be attracted to. We are asking for excellence. We are asking to be the district that looks at this literacy program, and it is the best that we can afford. I know money's tight. I get it. It's hard, but let's make sure our dollars are being spent well, and that's why I ask tonight that you seven who have the votes tonight to really think about if we should move forward tonight with this or not. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker I have is Jill Fisher. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Jill Fisher, and I reside on Seventy-Fifth Street North in Grant. I am a sixth generation of Stillwater, a Pony graduate, and a mother to a kindergartner and second grader who attends school in our district. I'm here to talk to you about my second grader son. He is a boy who asked for paper for his birthday and Christmas for two years in a row because he liked to make maps. He loves space, rocks, and anything nonfiction. He is currently at home boiling sap to make maple and boxcelter syrup while tending to his chickens and turkeys daily, and he also collects the eggs and sells them for money for his retirement. He doesn't know his Bs and Ds and mixes them up all the time. He writes "Bab" for Dad, a simple word like that. He never learned all of his letters in kindergarten. He didn't learn his letters in first grade. Instead, he moved along with the class and was attempting to learn to read like everybody else. He came into second grade at a kindergarten reading level. He continually says he wants to read chapter books like all of his friends, but he can't. As a mother, I'm heartbroken. In kindergarten and first grade, he came home from school, and he couldn't leave the house or he would have an emotional meltdown. I couldn't figure out why until we discovered he has a learning disability. He couldn't leave the house because he had exerted one hundred percent of his energy all day long trying to keep up with his peers to learn at the same rate that they are, and by three o'clock, he was done. My son is smart. He isn't lazy, and he isn't dumb. He isn't lazy and he isn't dumb. Looking back, he needed a different program than his school offered in order for his brain to learn how to decode the letters and sounds to learn how to read. He needed a structured literacy program and he wasn't alone. In his first grade class, there were five children pulled for reading help. Five of 25 kids is 20%. Various studies show that 15 to 20% of children have dyslexia. In his class, in our district, that statistic matches up exact and he was in just one of the three first grade classrooms at one of our elementary schools. Our district and administrators need to find a solution to help more than 80% of children. 80% is not a number you should feel comfortable with in providing a fair and equal education to our children. 100% of our students deserve a fair and equal education from their district. Buying a balanced literacy program plan that for $660,000, that does not provide evidence-based program like a structured literacy program to 100% of our children is the wrong decision. A credited dyslexia specialist was not part of the learning session as we've talked about. Last learning session, we had two professionals from outside the district come in to provide another perspective and give their professional guidance to the board to make the right decision. The administration was given a list of diverse dyslexia specialists who were all willing to come and talk with you about the proposed literacy plan and none of them were asked. Why? When such a vital topic such as children learning to read is at stake, why did you not get an expert's opinion to make sure you were implementing the correct system for our children? We live in the age of technology and we can research anything any time of the day. If dyslexia literacy was Googled, the first page that comes up says "structured literacy." The second that comes up, and I quote, "The most difficult problem for students with dyslexia is learning to read. Unfortunately, popularly employed reading approaches such as guided reading or balanced literacy are not effective for struggling readers," end quote. This is a quote from the International Dyslexia Association. Now, while you would not want to decide on a particular curriculum solely on the basis of a simple Google search, this search still provides the first step in research and important information from a reputable source, the IDA, that would have told the administration and the board that a structured literacy, not a balanced literacy program, is how to effectively teach all children how to read and write. Please vote no for the literacy curriculum. We need to put this decision on hold to bring an accredited dyslexia specialist to review a structured literacy plan and the costs associated with it. Your child or grandchild could be the 20% with a curriculum that will fail them.
Thank you. Next speaker is Sam Dresser.
I put my computer on this computer. Will it break something?
I will find out. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Sam Dresser and I live at 4815 Lilac Place North. Perhaps a lot of you are familiar with my wife, Tamara Tinkum. She's a person of class and integrity, very altruistic, and I know that she's been working very closely with many of you. And I'm here to talk a little bit about this process and I'm going to just take you up a mile and then I'm going to dive into the weeds a little bit because I'm very concerned. I'm going to tell you that you need to vote no on this and I'm going to tell you why. The first thing I want to say about structured literacy and this balanced literacy debate is that this is an old debate. This isn't new information to anybody. The fact that balanced literacy and Lucy Colkins is a repackaged effort, a repackaged effort of a failed literacy program for 20% of our students and in inner cities and cities that are impoverished, it is a civil rights issue and they are abandoning that approach left and right. They are abandoning it left and right because what happens to kids that don't make it in those places is they end up on the streets and they end up in jail. So now what we want to do is we want to say structured literacy, K through 3. It's important and you need to know why. Now I'm going to talk a little bit about the process. This is a strategic opportunity because what you have here is you have a board who has been wagged a little bit by the administration on this. I was really disappointed to come in today not to find any literacy experts in dyslexia to inform you about this particular topic area. Let me tell you what you missed. You missed everything. You saw two pages of citations, two pages of citations of a literacy program and you did not produce one centile of evidence and document that evidence in the form of a discussion of your literacy approach and this balanced literacy approach. It didn't exist. Nobody talked about it. Anybody can do that. It was a good business presentation, but it wasn't good, I have to tell you. Here's the thing, and I mean no disrespect to the teachers and the curriculum committee that put this together, none at all, but you saw the Minnesota polls. 97% of Minnesota teachers report getting no training in dyslexia in Minnesota. 92% of Minnesota teachers do not feel they can completely define dyslexia. So what you have here is a curriculum that was decided upon by teachers, that two generations of teachers that have been educated in this balanced literacy model that's been repackaged and they don't know what they don't know about putting together a curriculum that's going to address 20% of their population. And that's where we live and it is a civil rights issue. My kids started out at St. Croix Preparatory Academy. Let me tell you what happened. We ran out of that building in second grade. I'll tell you why. 10 civil rights lawsuits, 10 of them, parents leaving in droves. Why? Because this was a school that was not adept at teaching learning differences. Tamara and I filed an MDE complaint. They didn't know how to address an IEP. They had no ability to do that and we successfully got them remediated and they all had to go to training. But we ran from that building. So this is a strategic opportunity for this administration and for this board and for the board to tell this administration to go back to the drawing board, get some experts. Do you know that Tamara and I know some billionaire funders who would love to contribute money to a worthy effort to help dyslexic children? There are lots of them out there, folks. With a collaborative effort, this is a strategic opportunity. You can go back to the drawing board. This can be, hey, I get it, they spent some money. $400,000 on leveled literacy books and then what? You're down the road. Stop it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Speaker is Gudrun Willett. Welcome.
Hi, again, my name is Gudrun Willett and I live at 811 Third Street South. Forgive me for my cold. My husband and I are cultural anthropologists and we run a market research firm from our home. We have two children, 12 and four years old. The eldest attends Stillwater Middle School. I am here today to advocate on behalf of both children, but particularly this sixth grader who is dyslexic. Before the spring of 2017, my husband and I had no clue what dyslexia was. In preschool, a teacher told us that our oldest child wasn't making the same connections as other children, but she told us not to worry about it at that time. As the years went by, no other teacher or administrator ever advised us to test him for dyslexia or any other learning disability, even though we knew that he was a very reluctant reader and writer. By fourth grade, he was reading more fluently and by fifth grade, his teacher reassured us that he was reading at grade level. However, at the end of fifth grade, he still avoided reading and writing as much as possible. We knew that something was going on. The struggle was real for him. It stressed him out every time he tried to do an assignment. A friend and a family member, luckily for us, clued us in that he might be dyslexic. We had him tested at the University of Minnesota in May of 2017. The neuropsychologist diagnosed him with mild dyslexia, mild dysgraphia, and mild anxiety associated with dyslexia. It turns out that all these years, our son had not actually been associating individual sounds to letters when reading. He'd been guessing at words based on context. These diagnoses also explained his occasional depression and anxiety about learning. Despite being an extremely perceptive person, he often described himself as stupid and we and a few teachers sometimes thought that he wasn't working hard in school. That couldn't be farther from the truth. In fact, he was working harder and way more than any of the other students around him because of how his brain processes information. It was amazing that he actually passed as being at grade level all those years. Now that we know that our son is dyslexic, we have been helping him fill in the gaps with private Orton-Killingham tutoring. This should help him read more fluently in the future and help him better manage his coursework, but it will not solve or cure his dyslexia. The way he thinks and sees the world will always be different than 80% of the population and that can be a wonderful thing, even if it does come with challenges in a traditional education setting. Most researchers use the term dyslexia to describe the condition of processing information in the brain so that some types of learning such as reading are more difficult for these individuals. Working memory or short-term memory can also get overloaded in the process of reading and it may be harder for dyslexic people to remember a fact or skill without many repetitions, without breaking it down into more distinct steps, or using a song, a rhyme, or other meaningful memory aid. Nonetheless, dyslexia can also be a great thing for individuals in our society and I just wanted to express this. We've been talking about the challenges, but there's reasons why we want to support these kids in the way that they can give so much to us and to our society through their ability to get the gist and essence of things, see the larger picture, see things in multiple perspectives, and just their creativity. The way that their brains work is challenging for certain activities and amazing for others. So we have to look at both sides of the coin. So back to my son and what's going on here in the school district. I really, really want to reemphasize what my other presenters have said, that this curriculum does not appear at first to us to represent something that will help all of us, not just dyslexic kids, but kids in all spectrum of interests and needs, ones who are newly looking at English language for the first time and kids who aren't dyslexic would also benefit from more structured literacy program. So again, we need to educate teachers and families about dyslexia. We need to identify students with dyslexia through research-based assessments. We need to provide children and families with appropriate curricula to support their learning, such as a structured literacy program. We need to vote no on this curricular purchase and have experts look at what's going on here and see whether parts of it can be used. And we need to hire and draw on dyslexia experts to help children in all of their subject areas in grades, not just in the early periods. Dyslexia affects children and adults differently and it takes great expertise to figure out what accommodations will help each child reach their full potential. I'm not an expert. I'm an anthropologist. I need help figuring out what will help with my son. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker I have, I'm going to butcher it, Thaddeus Johannes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Thaddeus Johannes. I live in 588 Gateway Place, Woodbury, Minnesota. I'm very nervous. This is the first time I speak in front of a lot of people, so I did not write anything. I'm going to speak from my heart. I came from Ethiopia, 1999. I was born in Ethiopia and East Africa, I don't know if you know it. I was born in the middle of the wars. Never had peace in my childhood. So on top of that, I struggled. When I went to school, reading was a horrible thing that, you know, somebody created, you know? I hated it. I didn't want to read, especially in front of people because I get, I'm bad at it. So I was really getting upset, angry. My friends, because they were better than me. I was a really violent kid because no one was, just I cannot get close to any of them. So I was strong enough to just get violent. So when I get a chance to come here, I got opportunity to come to this great country and I had a chance to study again. I still struggle. Nobody told me what to do or what's wrong with me, but I find out maybe school is not for me. So I stopped, just worked, support my family. I work hard for my family. Get up early in the morning, run around to make money, put food on the table for them. That makes me happy. I don't know if I'm a great father or I'm a bad father, but my kids, what I can give them only love and the things that they need. I never ask them, "What's wrong with you? Why is this hard for you?" Because it was hard for me. I kind of, you know, ran away from it. So I have a son, 13 years old. He's really amazing soccer player, very good basketball player. I did not know anything about basketball. People tell me, "He's really amazing. He's going to be somebody." I was like, "No, I don't think so." Is it really, you know? And he believes himself, he's going to be the next Kyrie Irving. I don't know who the hell is he. But that's what he believe and it makes me happy. People tell me, "Wow, what a good kid you have and what a really amazing kid you have." But he struggled to read like me and it really, really hurts me inside of me every day. And I did not know until recently about this thing, dyslexic, whatever, you know? I'm not, I'm not even proud of it. So I was talking to Sam. I drive taxi. Sam was using me. We were talking about kids and I tell him, "I'm struggling with my 13 years old." And when I tell him, he's like, "Whoa, whoa, whoa, stop right there." He told me, "All this thing is, maybe he's dyslexic." Like, "What is that mean?" And I was like, and I explained to my childhood, the same thing I have. I'm seeing what I saw myself. I don't know how to help him. The school never told me how to help him. Even though he is, some of my friends probably here, he's famous in school because he is athletic. He can make friends, but in the school, he is struggling. So please vote no because I want my son to get help and I have a big hope. This country gave me so much hope. Always I live in hope. So I have big hope on you guys to change my son's life. And I have a kindergarten kid. It looks like the same thing. So I feel always I say to myself, to my wife, "I think I'm cursed, you know? I'm passing to them." But I hope that is a chance, that is hope that you guys can achieve that. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Tamara Tinkum.
I'm going to yield my time to Rachel Berger.
Next speaker is Rachel Berger.
Well, he was right. It's kind of intimidating, even though I've served the Hugo Park.
Did you get your address? Sorry.
Oh, sorry about that. 14318 Cosette Way, Hugo, Minnesota. And while I've served our city's commission for a number of years and always told people not to be nervous, standing in this position, here I stand before you feeling rather intimidated. Bear with me. I am really excited to be here today and to learn about the collaboration your school district has made with parents and advocates in the community and the steps that you guys are taking towards implementing programs and a plan that will help all of the members of your schools achieve grade-level literacy and an equitable education. Looking at, and also that, I'm sorry, you're looking at a curriculum that appears to have a lot of great qualities about it. However, I think that it looks like when you factor in the populations, it's probably really solid in helping 2/3 of the population that will not struggle as deeply as those with dyslexia and... with dyslexia, and it, it maybe leaves 1/3 of that population still needing a little bit more support, which you're addressing with your reading curriculum tiers. And I love that your students don't have to have a diagnosis to access those supports that really speaks highly, they can access that whether they're identified or not identified. However, it looks to me that one of the areas that speaks to me is in the Tier 2 support. And if a child is struggling with Tier 1 support in the classroom and not making gains in literacy as they should, and that's again, despite effective classroom instruction, and despite the effort that children are putting forth, and the effort that teachers are putting forth, I see no need to not go directly to a systematic, explicit approach that'll help them further gain their skills and knowledge. I know you guys refer to the Tier 2 as an additional scoop, that's common language, and I mean no offense when, when I use this, but I tend to think of scoops like ice cream, and that can be fun, but at the same rate, I look at the scoops with education as if we're going to use another scoop of the same what's already been used in the classroom that might already, might not be working effectively for a student, it may not get us where we want. And, and when we don't go directly to systematic, explicit intervention for a student who might have very specific needs, we're losing time and their ability to make those grade-level gains as adequately as they can. What I'd like to recommend is that you have the ability to consult with some of the experts in the community and look a little bit deeper at creating a solid plan for the students that might not achieve literis, grade-level reading proficiency, and might have either characteristics of dyslexia or be diagnosed with dyslexia, before you continue to move forward on the program that you have that will work for the other population.
Thank you very much. Next speaker I have is Nisha Anderson.
Thank you. My name is Nisha Anderson, and I live at 54th and Oak Green Avenue in Baytown Township. I have a daughter in 1st grade at Anderson Elementary, and a daughter at the 4-year-old preschool program at the Early Childhood Center. I'm a former elementary school teacher, and I taught 2nd and 3rd grade in Anoka-Hennepin. Recently, I set up a meeting with Principal Benz, because I know this is the time of year principals are working on staffing for the following year. I had already met with her a few times this year regarding concerns for safety in the classroom, so I was hopeful to hear about how classes are made at Anderson, since this is our first year there, and what accommodations or plans would be that would put into action, or that would be put into action for students and teachers for the next school year. Mrs., I will say Mrs. Benz has been very open to discuss, listen, and share plans and information as she can. At the meeting, I learned news about the next school year that greatly concerned me. Our current 1st graders at Anderson are in 3 classrooms with 18 to 20 children per classroom. Next year, the plan is to have 2 classrooms in 2nd grade, and that would bring our numbers up to 29 per class. I understand class size and numbers of sections are something that are continuously changing with families coming and going, moving out of the area, moving in. I also understand we are currently working with numbers that we have now, which are likely to be different than in August. Nonetheless, I'm concerned. As we're planning for 29 children in a 2nd grade class is way too many in my experience. The reason my husband and I placed our children into the care of the public school system is because we believe it is the best place for them to grow and learn to become the most productive and compassionate members of society possible. For the first time, I have had moments where I have doubted our decision. I am worried that if I am questioning these things that I value so much, that other parents must be questioning them too. I know many parents are concerned about what is happening in our schools, and they are moving to other options. Something big needs to change to help with our enrollment. Our schools, our, other schools are drawing students out of our schools because they can provide the basic fundamentals that schools should, a safe environment and a place to learn. Tonight, I'm here to bring up my serious concerns relating to safety and learning at Anderson. I don't wanna go into a laundry list of examples of why this needs to be addressed, because I know the board, superintendent, and principal have all been receiving countless emails on this topic. The bottom line is that if we put so many students into 1 classroom at this young age, when they are already struggling at this low class size they currently have, I cannot understand how the teachers and students could be set up for success. I am an educator, and I know this is not an issue isolated to Anderson. This is a nationwide issue that needs immediate attention. My personal teaching philosophy is that children need to be safe, feel loved, and have the basic needs met in order to learn, grow, and thrive. The basic needs of many of our students are clearly not being met. These children are coming to school and having outbursts and exhibiting dangerous behaviors at the expense of their peers, teachers, and themselves. To me, this is a clear cry for help. Didn't we consolidate schools last year in order to have enough resources available to support all of our students? Clearly, this has not been the case. There needs to be a consistent and intentionally trained group of staff responsible for responding to support these children who have additional needs and need support. Hopefully, these people can be called for support before behaviors escalate to the point of needing to evacuate classrooms. If we don't address and help all of the students at our school, we're going to have more and more kids who are needing special attention and have additional needs, including mental health issues. I cannot imagine cramming 29 of these kids into a classroom when we have seen countless examples of disruption in learning already this school year. Having one teacher expected to manage some of these extreme behaviors and actually make the setting of their classroom feel calm, safe, and ready for learning seems quite far-fetched to me. How is it even plausible to think these teachers would have a fighting chance to do what they're really there to do, which is supposed to be teach our children how to read, write, add, and subtract? I strongly encourage the board to look at cap, this class cap sizes, and think about what is best for the children we entrust with you, to keep safe, learn, and grow into capable and compassionate citizens who will lead the future.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Benjamin Davis.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Benjamin Davis, and I live in Dutch Town here in Stillwater. I'm also one of the transportation coordinators for the school district. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the transportation terminal property purchase agreement you will have before you later this evening. From my perspective, the size and facilities already on the property make it extremely desirable. The logistics of the location are not an issue. It is more expensive than originally budgeted. However, we are coming up on the 3-year anniversary of the bond's passage, and land values have been increasing over time. The longer this takes, the more expensive it will become, and less likely we will be able to find appropriate land within the boundaries of the district. This parcel's estimated market value, according to Washington County, has doubled since 2015. The reason behind the need for a bus terminal is clear. We have been engaged in a long-term lease of the Stagecoach property for years, prior to my employment with the district. We then sublease the property to the bus contractor. Those lease payments affect the rates we pay for bus service, and if we own a property, we can see a transportation savings in the general fund, savings that would happen repeatedly for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Deb Weiss, or Wiss, I guess.
Always.
Wiss.
Always.
Thank you.
Yes. My address is 5919 Old Field Avenue North in Oak Park Heights.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Deb Wiss. I am a mother to a preschooler and a 1st grader, both attending Anderson Elementary in Bayport. My 1st grade daughter was born with an extremely rare genetic syndrome called Coffin-Siris syndrome. It's an intellectual disability, and it also has a lot of medical complications. It impacts every area of her life, and therefore, it impacts every area of my life and every area of our family's life. So, I'm here today, first of all, just to say thank you. The Stillwater area public school system has literally been a lifeline for us at many points in our special needs journey. I didn't think I'd cry. The staff has been much more than staff to us. They have improved my daughter's quality of life, which has in turn improved the quality of life of our family, and, and the things that we experience every day. Many of the staff have become people that we turn to when we need advice as we make decisions that will impact our daughter, and we have felt support in so many ways, and I don't know where our family would be without all of you. So thank you for all you do. I'm also here today to ask you to do everything in your power to keep this wonderful experience going. I'm also concerned about the class size projections for this fall. Specifically, I'm here to say, can we change the current class size number policy, or at least make a way to allow for exceptions to this policy when there are extenuating circumstances, so that there would be less students per class when there are difficult situations? So you have heard the concerns of many, many parents at Anderson about the mental health crisis that we are experiencing and the way that it is affecting our children. It's a significant problem, and it needs a significant solution. I know that the sticking point seems to be money, where this will come from. However, I'm just here to tell you what the picture is from my end. My daughter's current 1st grade class size is estimated to jump 10 additional students as they begin 2nd grade in the fall. Her grade level has also been one of the ones that have, has been heavily affected by some of these behavioral issues. So besides cramming 29 students into 1 classroom, this adjustment means that there will be several, multiple students with significant behavioral issues together in this 1 room. And as we've seen this year, it just doesn't work. So, as a mom of a child with special needs, I'm worried. Yes, I'm worried for her safety, her well-being, but also, I'm just worried she's gonna fall through the cracks, and I'm ready to speak up. Your choices and decisions. Sorry.
It's okay.
Your choices and decisions have impacted my family in a really enormous way, and my daughter and our family were thriving in the midst of a pretty difficult situation. You have played a very large part in our success. You have a significant ability to impact individual lives, lives of families, and lives of this, in this whole community as a whole. So, it's a great responsibility, and I know it's not one that you take lightly. So, I'm asking you to carry on, and don't grow weary, and let's find a way through this.
Thank you very much. Next speaker I have is Nicole Bartlett. I bet it's not Bartlett.
No, that's okay. It's Bartelt.
Bartelt. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Nicole Bartelt. I live at 5663 O'Brien Avenue North in Oak Park Heights. And I just wanna echo my fellow parents and friends' comments. I have a 1st grader at Anderson Elementary and a 3-year-old in the 3-school program at the ECFE building. My mom taught in District 834 for over 35 years at Withrow and Afton Lakeland, so although I didn't grow up in this district, I'm very familiar with the district. In general, we've really had a great experience, but I do wanna keep that going. So, my background is as a civil engineer, so I'll focus a little bit more on this number side, take a little step back. My son has been doing very well in school, both at Oak Park and at Anderson, and he has thrived this year in his 1st grade classroom with that low classroom size. So, taking a little bit of a step back, my question is really, what is normal and what should be expected for class sizes, right? Looking across the Twin Cities, across Minnesota, and across the nation, what really are the standard practices? And I went to Michigan State University, which is a pretty large education institution for both elementary and secondary education, and a number of my teacher, friends are teachers, and I started calling them across the nation, and I said, "You know, what, what can I be expecting here? What should I look for?" And specifically, I guess one example was a friend of mine who's a 2nd grade teacher for over 15 years, she's taught in Michigan, California, and now currently Texas. And her 2nd grade classroom this year was 22, and she said that's the largest class size that she's ever had in her classroom experience in 3 different states. I was a little surprised. For her, in Texas, they have a mandate that they can't go above 20 students per classroom without a waiver for K through 4. For 5 through 8, they can't go above 25 without a waiver. And that seemed quite a bit different than what we were hearing, that, you know, we might be getting up to 29 students, so that was concerning. I know, and through, you know, internet searches and such, that in Florida, Texas, and upwards, I think, 24 states in total have mandated max classroom sizes. And typically, in that 20 to 24 range for elementary school is what I've been seeing. So I'm concerned that, just on a basic level, that those classroom ratios seem out of whack for our, what we've seen, and seem too large for proper classroom control and learning. So I respectfully ask the school board to reconsider those class side ranges, or to consider looking at them again, and consider class size changes potentially for certain classrooms. I don't know if that means looking at Title 1 schools, you know, most of those mandated classroom sizes came out of trying to address achievement gaps. Thank you. And I think that's one area that Minnesota has fallen behind a little bit on, where, although we do a very good job in general, I think that's something that we can still consider. So, I've had a very good experience to date, and I want to make sure that that environment continues, so I just ask you to take another look. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Superintendent Pontrelli, considering this, I was just wondering, is the, the meeting from last night, has that been put up on the website? Because a lot of these questions can be addressed by watching that and give you some input on that, so.
[inaudible]
Okay, perfect. So.
And I just wanted to, I don't even know, Chair Lehman, too, just for Nicole, Deb, and Nisha, who shared with us, we've been having conversations weekly about Anderson, and how to help support in watching those numbers, and we share your concern. So, thank you.
Next speaker I have is Kristy Mack. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Kristy Mack, I live on Pine Street in Stillwater. I'm here tonight to speak about priorities. What are your priorities as a board? What are the priorities of our administration? I know the standard generalized answer has been that what's best for all students is the top priority in our district. However, actions speak louder than words. It is seriously disturbing to see this administration wanting to plow ahead with new projects, when at the same time, the mess created by Bold has not been cleaned up. Children and parents have been left in the dust, while at the same time, there are new plans to spend a whole lot of money that we just don't have. Regarding the proposal for a new bus terminal property, the bond set aside 3.5 million for a bus terminal. The latest proposal is to purchase a $5 million property. That doesn't include the cost to prepare or improve the property to be a bus terminal. If you do have the extra funds to go above and beyond what was set aside in the bond for the bus terminal property, where would these funds be coming from? And also, why then couldn't extra funds be found to get the additional specialists in place that were promised by Bold? Additional specialists could bring tremendous relief to the problems occurring at Anderson Elementary. The parents have been crying out for help, they need additional support staff, not additional staff that comes at the expense of another school losing their support staff, or by having their support staff time cut down. Issues related to Bold. Lily Lake Elementary is teaching its 5th grade classes in 1 giant space that is literally separated by bookshelves and movable storage units. When I first heard of this, I didn't believe it until I saw it with my own eyes. When will actual walls be built to make these classrooms? Adventure Club is held in a windowless storage space at the back of the gym. Knowing situations like these, a pure lack of space, have been created due to Bold, it's hard for me to understand why we wouldn't prioritize our funds to address these- hard for me to understand why we wouldn't prioritize our funds to address these existing issues and make them a higher priority rather for, rather than, for example, building an additional, or in addition, onto a brand-new elementary school. Children at Brookview are not suffering from a lack of space and any growth that occurs in the South can be accommodated for by reopening existing elementary schools. You have placed the fourth and fifth grade students in the middle school and provided no playground. They remain quite isolated from their peers. The plan for them could have been much better thought out by pairing them with a sister school so they could feel like a part of a larger group of their peers and enjoy the elementary school experience. Why aren't we talking about these existing issues and how to improve the situation? When Bold was first being proposed, there were promises made and presentations by our administration regarding support staff to help with the transition of students from closed schools to their new schools. One particular presentation stuck out to me when it was said that the culture of the closed schools will be carried forward and recreated in the new. To my knowledge, no such support was put in place nor occurred for elementary students during their transition. Teachers and principals are the glue that kept things together during the transition. And I also think it's important to add that I've talked to parents recently who just want this year to be over and are looking for other options for next year, which is really disheartening to hear. Rather than stopping or slowing down and focusing in on supporting the people affected by the changes that have just occurred and really focusing in on what's on our plates, we continue to plow ahead. At what cost? This mentality does nothing to help with growing purposeful, meaningful relationships between students, teachers, staff, and administration. I highly recommend that you give a presentation on the true accounting of Bold, a before-and-after picture. I'm talking about hard numbers. I'm talking about transparency and accountability. Have people who thought Bold was going to give them everything they so desperately needed receive things they needed? Maybe a little reflection is in order before plowing ahead with yet more ventures. The proposals that are before you regarding a new bus terminal property and eventually a decision on in addition to Brookview Elementary seem incredibly reckless and highly irresponsible, not only from a financial perspective, but also from the perspective of having much higher priorities to deal with, such as relief for Anderson Elementary, and to fulfill all the promises of Bold. It has not been proven, even in the slightest, the need for action, especially regarding the purchasing of the bus property, but also for the addition on to Brookview. There needs to be a discussion regarding wants versus needs amongst the board and our administration, just like we teach our kids. Please, let's get our priorities straight. Children first.
Thank you very much. Next, the final speaker we have is Mira White.
I'm Mira White. It's 307 Edgewood. And I just have something really short. I think that the literacy curriculum proposal could do three things. It could support kids with dyslexia. It could, number two, do nothing to support them or not change anything that we're doing now, which I guess is a thought. Are we, is it horrible now? Could we take some time to pause and be lifetime learners and invite someone to get an analysis? I think if it's a good, if it's a good program, then we'll know that and it'll stand the test. The other, third thing is that it could hurt dyslexics. And I don't even understand fully this, but I think we need to understand how, if you don't teach reading correctly, it can not only do nothing, but hurt kids.
I take the rest of Mira's time, or some of it. I'm sitting back here, pretty emotional, and this is a big issue for me. This is an important issue for my family. And I just want to ask all of you to do your due diligence and really look into this literacy curriculum before you approve it. We've asked and asked, we've provided lists of dyslexia specialists to come and do learning sessions with you, and no one was there today. And I kind of don't understand how this process, how we got here. But if you can help families like ours, the 20% of people that this curriculum will not help. I have gone to three of the top dyslexia specialists in the country, or in the state, not the country, in the state. And I, the comments that I got when they looked at this piece of paper were horrifying. And I'm not going to go into all the details of what they said, but suffice to say, they said, "That won't cut it for our kids." And I think that's why there was not a dyslexia specialist at our learning session today. So, again, I just want to ask you to take your time and really look at this and remember all the families that have spoken and all the rest that haven't. Thanks.
Thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the school board and will be enacted by one motion and an affirmative vote by the majority of the board members present. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered a separate subject of discussion by the board. On the consent agenda tonight are the minutes of the March 18th, March 8th, 2018 school board meeting. Accept gifts and donations, February 2018. See dispersment register, March 1st through the 20th, 2018. D, the treasures report, February 2018, and the human resource personnel report. Seeing no one pulling anything, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you very much. All those in favor signify by raising eye and holding up your hand. Eye. Opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. On tonight's agenda, we have one report. It's a Portrait of a Graduate Community Engagement Feedback, and we have Carissa Keister.
Good evening, Chair Lehman, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to come and talk with you a little bit about the exciting community engagement work that we have been taking part in for the last 18 months or more, maybe closer to 20 now. As you have heard over and over again, we have been asking our community about the skills, the experiences, and the attributes that they want from our students. And this Portrait of a Graduate that we're trying to create is really going to be the basis of our planning moving forward. As you know, our Bridge to Excellence Plan is expiring this year, which has been our strategic plan that's been guiding us for the last five years. And so, we're looking to our community to help us determine what we need to be focused on as we move forward with our next planning stage. So, for, as I mentioned, the last 20 or so months, we have engaged the community in a conversation about what they think being a Stillwater graduate really needs to look like and what skills, attributes, and experiences our kids need. We've had more than 2,000 people participate, whether it's online or in-person through a variety of different means. And I will be sharing with you tonight some of that feedback that we've gotten. I have been fully immersed in this for months and months, just reading through all of the data we've collected, and it's been really fun. And what's exciting is a lot of the themes are very consistent. So, you'll probably get tired of me saying the same things over and over as I go through these different things, so I won't go in detail. You'll be able to read it on the screen. One thing I do want to point out is when we did the Bridge to Excellence strategic plan five years ago, we had about 250 voices that weighed in with that, people that actually came to meetings and attended and helped us with that plan. So, to see more than 2,000 people represented, I think, is really powerful and shows that we've had a lot of diverse opinions shared. We've reached out to the community more than we ever have, as far as business leaders, retirees, people without kids in the district, as well as parents in our staff. So, the first thing we did was, a year ago, we had a Thought Exchange online discussion. We sent out a survey link to community members, parents, and our staff and invited them to tell us about the experiences, skills, and attributes they wanted from our kids. And then, the software program takes all of the data that was collected and creates these themes for us. And you'll see life skills, financial literacy were the top things that they talked about. Also, conversation about curriculum and programming, class size, which we've heard over and over tonight and other times from our community, vocational experiential learning, and then instruction to meet different learning needs. When we talked about skills and attributes, critical thinking rose to the top. Communication is always a big one, both written and verbal communication. People really want to see that work ethic and accountability. Those are harder things to teach kids, but it is providing them experiences to develop those creative thinking and problem solving, and they want students who know how to collaborate and work with others. So, those were the top themes that came out of Thought Exchange. We also conducted several think tanks. The board has heard about these over and over again. This was an opportunity for us to bring in community leaders and experts from a variety of fields. We had people with more of a technical engineering background. We had small business owners, entrepreneurs, people in the medical field, artists, musicians, kind of a gamut of people came in. And their common themes were about providing a lot of experiential learning for kids. So, field trips, project-based learning, kind of focused less on testing and more on those hands-on things that kids need to give them those skills to prepare them for careers. A lot of community partnership conversations happened with that group about what they can do and provide as community people to get our kids out into relevant learning experiences. Some of the skills and attributes are those soft skills. Networking, grit, and perseverance, the ability to learn from failure came through very clearly with that group. Being able to solve complex problems, again, the life skills, financial literacy, and communication has come up over and over. I think that really comes down to, you know, kids spend a lot of time texting and people want to be able to have conversations with our students, have them look you in the eye, be able to engage in kind of those interpersonal relationships as well. We have, this winter, conducted some, two Portrait of a Graduate conversations where we invited people to come in and have a conversation that was kind of facilitated and in small groups, talk about these same things. And I'm not going to read through these because you've already heard me say them. A couple of new ones are being open-minded, and I think the other ones kind of came up over and over again. Those real-world experiences, the community connections. Most Likely to Succeed conversations also happened this winter, and there was a slightly different focus with that, a little bit different format. But again, some of the same themes came out as we heard people talking about the opportunities for kids to really develop creativity and innovation, that idea of kids having the opportunity to make mistakes and to learn for them, to be able to be risk takers. And again, a lot of the, the learning, real-world learning experiences and 21st century learning. The last piece that we did was Community Leader Roundtable, and I know some of you participated in this. And to be honest, it was my favorite of all of our community engagement projects that we took place. It was a really great opportunity to bring some of our business leaders in, to hear from their perspective of what they need from kids as they enter the workforce, and then for our community to talk to those people and have some really interesting conversations about what that looks like. And one of my favorite quotes that someone might mention that night was that "The literate of the 21st century will not be those who cannot read and write, but those who cannot learn, unlearn, and relearn." And that was a really common theme that came through and resonated, I think, with everybody that was in the room that night. Another online tool that we just provided in the last couple of months was a survey, just a quick Google form that people could provide some more feedback if they were unable to attend some of these in-person events. This gave them the opportunity to weigh in with feedback. And we had several, I think, close to a couple hundred people that participated in this as well. And again, those same skills of motivation, critical thinking, work ethic, accountability, life skills, social responsibility, and real-world experiences came through very clearly on that as well. And the final piece is, we had conversations with our own staff. There were some fun, lively conversations. You can see some of the artwork as our staff drew out what a portrait of a graduate looked like. Some of them were centered around, you can see the strength, the muscle there, the person standing up on a, on a, I don't know what that is, a pedestal of some sort. I think Nate Cox in this picture is actually drawing a pony and having all the different attributes in there. So, our educators had a really fun time engaging in this conversation as well. And you can see there, the things that came out with that group was really self-awareness, perseverance, and grit, the collaboration, communication, problem solving, and empathy was another big one that our staff put forward. So, taking all of these different pieces, this slide kind of gives you an overview of some of the key themes. And this is truly going into a spreadsheet, typing up all the feedback, and sorting it and categorizing it, and these are the ones that rose to the top. I think I have covered all of these already, but I'll give you a minute to just look through What we've done now is taking all of that feedback, we've listed it and broken it down into a couple of key themes, and those are collaboration, critical thinking, creativity, communication, and self-awareness. So, based on all of the feedback we've received from more than 2,000 people, it truly does come up that these themes were the ones that rose to the top. And what's exciting about it is, this is work that we've been talking about for a while in the district. I think this is things that you've been talking about as a school board that are really important things for our kids to have. And this is the next step towards creating that Portrait of a Graduate, is looking at this and starting to break that down and what does that mean at the classroom level? How does a teacher make sure that a student is provided with opportunities for critical thinking? What does it look like if a student's expressing creativity? So, those are the next steps. And you'll see that in this little diagram, too, which I know you've seen before as a board, as we look at our next adaptive planning process, a little bit different than strategic planning, because we want something that's more flexible, that we can change as we need to, as we each year, look at what's worked and what hasn't worked and be able to make some adjustments along the way. So, where we are at right now is kind of halfway down, actually near the bottom of this, where we are working to finalize the Portrait of a Graduate. And we will be bringing that to you on April 12th as a first draft for you to look at and, and take a peek at and see if we're on track with what it is that you have heard from the community and what it is that you want us to do with our Portrait of a Graduate. That ties into our World's Best Workforce goals as well, as we have the Portrait of a Graduate and the World's Best Workforce. Those two pieces are going to be aligned and ultimately become our plan as we move forward. So, those are the things that are coming up for you. You'll have an opportunity, again, to vote on the Portrait of a Graduate, to vote on World's Best Workforce goals, and ultimately, that information goes back to our school staff and they start to develop a plan for their individual building and at the classroom level of how they're going to implement all of this. So, with that, any questions?
Any questions for Carissa? Go ahead.
Thank you. So, what we'll be voting on is the five key themes. What we are going to have is, I think we've shown some graphics to you before of how some other districts have done Portrait of a Graduate. It's kind of those themes and then some key indicators underneath there, what that really looks like.
Not what we thought tonight will be.
No, it'll be, it'll be more in-depth and kind of show, again, ultimately, what we're trying to do is create a document that our staff can then use in the classroom. So, if we say collaboration's important, what does that look like at a classroom level? And how does a teacher really know how to measure that and identify that in students? So, it'll be a little bit more detailed.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I guess I'm a little bit confused. I thought that we were going to be weighing in on this final result as a board before we actually were voting on it.
I think you are. Is there a work session that we've been scheduling or some other follow-up as far as presenting a draft of the Portrait of a Graduate?
That's part of the engagement dream team.
Oh. I mean, has anyone else had that thought? I mean, I really thought we were going to have a conversation. We talked about it at a work session way last fall. I think John Perry was in there. Thought it was a really productive beginning to a conversation that I thought we were going to continue. In fact, I thought we had a schedule of that at one point, of like a process we were going to go through.
We did have a schedule.
Yeah. But I think part of what may help is that later on, when we give work group reports, I think Jennifer and Shelley and I can talk to it, because part of it, and many of you in the audience are probably at home or well aware of it, we're trying to put forward a collection of individuals who will serve on an advisory board. So, that simultaneously goes with, I think, what Sarah's talking about here. And that one definitely does have timelines, because we talked about that at our last meeting. And what the three of us hope to achieve next Monday is to get a better handle on, we had something like 48 applicants. We know we need to cut that down to 25, which is no easy task. The good news is you had 48 apply. The bad news is, we can't accommodate all of them yet. In future years, we might.
Right. I think, I think Sarah's speaking to the Portrait of a Graduate. This, that Chris is just sharing with you, is just a draft. It's to bring you the, all of these strands that she's brought together. She's tried to simplify it all and put it in kind of a coherent, meaningful graphic for you to start looking at. So, it certainly is for more conversation, whenever, whether you want a work session or if you want to continue to do it here at board meetings, it's your choice.
Yeah, I would just like to add, thank you for bringing that up, and I think we'll just have a discussion about it at the, at the next meeting, because we've been, to Director Potashik's point, we, we've been immersed in assembling all the applications all the applications. We're going to be going through them this week, meeting on Monday, and then I think we're going to go to next steps. But I appreciate the comment and we'll have a discussion about it.
I think I just feel like I want to clarify. So, the Portrait of a Graduate is, as I understood it, was our sort of three, it's a replacement to the Bridge to Excellence, which is our long-term kind of strategic.
I would say it's a piece of it. I wouldn't say it's a replacement to it. As I mentioned, the Portrait of a Graduate, the World's Best Workforce, as we looked at Reimagine Minnesota, there were a couple of different pieces that are really going to help shape the plan moving forward. The Portrait of a Graduate is maybe that, that first piece that's helping to guide the work. But it's going to be aligned with the World's Best Workforce, which is really the meat of it all. As you know, there's some pretty specific strategies and goals tied to World's Best Workforce. So, they all fit together.
I'd say it's more that kind of symbolic graphic to pull everything together. And so, we, we have a community engagement calendar with a lot of these things on. We're a little bit behind, so we need to retool. So, if the community engagement team wants to look at that and look at those dates, you've got a lot of things on your calendar.
Director Lachlan.
And I think it was my understanding that, and correct me if I'm wrong, that just as Carissa said, the Portrait of a Graduate would inform our work, the, the goals of the World's Best Workforce. And that would kind of allow us to put on that Stillwater personalized, customized, you know, tailor-made goals, if you will. And I, I think we do have a couple of work sessions before we actually vote on those goals in, in April. So, I think there will be opportunity. That's how I understood it, that it was.
Okay. Director Pearson?
Well, and I would just say to Director Stivlin's point, I think I agree with her that I want us to make sure we're intentional about having conversation because I think everything that we've attended, it's been as observers. And so, it would be good for us to have a conversation around, you know, what's been brought to us and what might we want to add or what have we seen as we've gone to several of the different areas. So, I want to make sure that we're intentional about getting that conversation on the books.
So, I think next steps will be your group, Director Pelletier, and then maybe setting some dates to, to get this for learning sessions.
Yep.
Moving forward.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. And I think Shelley, I'd have to go back, but I think to what Sarah had commented on, the first activity that you engaged with, with John Perry was Portrait of a Graduate, your view as a board. But that's been a while now, so certainly to bring back, here's what the community says, how does that resonate with us? That's exactly what you should be doing.
Yeah. And, and the two are complementary. I mean, Sarah, thanks for reminding us.
And just to clarify, I think that, that the Portrait of the Graduate piece, the piece that would sort of use all of this information that Carissa has compiled and all of these resources, and then our conversation, to me, that's a whole board thing, not just the committee. And I, the committee to me, you guys are really busy putting together that, the tasking for the World's Best Workforce. And once we have those things kind of more defined, then we can see where, what that looks like within those components of the World's Best Workforce.
Director Pelletier?
Yep. So, my, so my comment to that would be, we'll have a discussion about this discussion and kind of work out a framework for timing and that kind of thing. Go back to the board, not to make any sort of decision or anything like that at that, at that meeting. So, we'll have that initial discussion and then kind of work on some general timelines so we can all get together and discuss.
And I'm imagining like a, a work session, two or three or four hours, maybe a half-day kind of thing or something, if we can find that time.
We certainly will look.
It should be very easy.
No, thank you to the community engagement group. They do have a lot on their, their plate. And we will also all be voting on who the members are. They're just whittling it down, so it's something we can take a look at. So, thank you, Carissa.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carissa, and your team for all your work.
Yes.
All right, we have two action items tonight. The first is the literacy curriculum purchase, and we have Ms. Larson.
Good evening, Board Chair Lehman, Superintendent Pontrelli, members of the board. At the January 18th, 2018 School Board Meeting, you were presented with information regarding our elementary literacy review and curriculum adoption process. The purpose of that report was to keep you informed per policy R 1.2 and inform you that we are in year two of our Stillwater area schools' curriculum framework, administrative process and procedures. Year two focuses on evaluation and recommendation. Year three is a stage of implementation. Therefore, we respectfully request your approval to order the necessary instructional materials supporting the adoption of the curriculum for the 2018-19 school year. The purchase of instructional materials will be over $100,000.
Great. So, we all had questions. We had a learning session tonight for the public who's tuning in on the internet right now because the TV feed is down, but hopefully it will be up soon. And so, we want to continue, I think there were other board members who had questions. So, my thought would be to, to finish up the questions, then have someone move this and then discussion by the board, and then we'll see where we're at. So, whoever would like to, I think Director Patachik, you had questions. Do you want to start or?
My question is, and you've answered it before, but I'm very concerned about it. And that is especially when we talk about data. And you, you had that nice slide that had the World's Best Workforce, which we've referenced several times. The most important to me, or one of the most important benchmarks on there, is that all third graders can read at the appropriate grade. What I'm curious about, because I think the presentation we had tonight involved both the present and the future. What's our present proficiency rate for third graders?
Can you clarify, are you speaking proficiency as it relates to MCA reading assessments?
Correct.
Because that starts in third grade.
Yes.
So, we can pull up that data and I'll have Karen share that with you. But there's also other pieces of assessment and performance we look at for achievement, which would be the FastBridge assessment and other formative summatives in the classroom. So, I want to make sure we don't umbrella.
And Rachel, what I would say there is obviously the state for the World's Best Workforce requires us to report on this. So, what I would like you to stay as much as you can, your focus, what do you submit to them?
Perfect. So, my name is Karen Laterell and I am a curriculum specialist at the District Office in Stillwater. Good evening, everyone. Currently, well, I looked at the MCA, I wrote down the third grade MCA proficiency rates. And so, for the past three years, for exceeds and meets proficiency, in 2015, Stillwater area schools at grade three had 73.3% of their students meet proficiency. And at the state level, it's 58.7%. In 2016, our proficiency rate for meets and exceeds standards at grade three was 66.7%. At the state, it was a 57.3% meets or exceeds rate. And in 2017, 68% of Stillwater third graders met or exceeded standards. And at the state level, it was 56.5%.
And my point being, that definitely shows a need.
Anything else? Good for now. Director Pearson?
I have a whole page, but I'm going to start with two and maybe not do any more than that. But looking at this, we've been hearing, something we've been hearing from some of the parents of dyslexic students is that maybe a different program, what they would say is structured literacy would help keep more kids in the tier one than having to go up to some of these other intervention areas. Could that be true?
I would say that we are including a structured literacy program in tier one, and that is specifically Letterland. And I have research that supports the use, including from the National Reading Panel, from the Florida Center for Reading Research, from neuropsychologists, from well-regarded universities such as Wake Forest and others. And so, I would say that we do have support that shows that Letterland is a structured literacy program. It's based on the theories developed by Orton and Gillingham back in the early 1900s. It is multisensory. It is explicit. It addresses phoneme segmentation. It addresses phoneme blending. It addresses other aspects of phonemic awareness. It addresses phonics. It incorporates, like I said, multisensory earlier. One of the speakers referenced the idea that students need explicit and engaging instruction. And Letterland phonics, or the Letterland program, is narrative-based. So, each letter has a character that is associated with the letter. So, it takes away an abstract concept and gives it something familiar that a student can grasp onto at that grade level. And each character has a story. And each story relates to other characters who live in Letterland. And those characters interact just like the letters of our alphabet interact. But instead of teaching abstract rules when the abstract brain is not yet developed, because that does not begin to develop until middle years or higher, it teaches narrative that students can grasp onto, to remember when vowel teams are together, why are they making a specific sound? Or if you have a digraph together, why does an S and an H say shh when separately they say s or huh? And we have, we have much research that backs up Letterland as an explicit, systematic, structured literacy program for our young learners. And we've crosswalked it against Wilson phonics foundations. We've, we've compared the strategies, we've compared the, the components, the scope and sequence in them. And far and beyond, Letterland, while it meets everything that foundations is doing, it is more age-appropriate and it is incredibly engaging. And I can tell you quote after quote from parent or educator who is using it, that supports its use, that kids are exceeding benchmarks with this. And I also have evidence, hard data, that supports the other component that we are recommending as well, the units of study in reading and writing. So, I'd like to stress that we are definitely including a structured component in our tier one and in our tier two and in our tier three and in our special education tier four.
What we have heard is that the structured literacy that this group of parents wants is Wilson-based and sponsored through dyslexia research and organizations. So, that's where the difference is. We're using structured literacy components, it's just not what's been suggested by the parents. And in all the research that we've done, we have not found outside institutions that were separate from dyslexia organizations or advocates or specialists that prove that those structured Wilson programs do, in large communities, impact core curriculum the way it's said by dyslexia organizations. So, that is one piece that's, that's alarming to us when we look at that. But we are incorporating pieces of structured literacy, it's just not the Wilson or similar to maybe a Groves Academy or places that are, are very structured in balance. So, and one other thing to point out is we have been operating in a balanced literacy framework. So, what we're talking about here is a systemic, district-wide curricular adjustment to a structured literacy program that is, is different, if you're talking core, than what we've had in the district. And that's a bigger, bigger discussion than curriculum adoption and the process of where we're at right now.
Director Pearson, I think you said you had two, so.
Yeah, thank you.
It says on here that Letterland is only going to be for pre-K and K.
We are using it right now in grade one in a limited capacity and are interested in expanding it into grade one. It does go through grade two, just as foundations does.
So, what happens? Words Their Way is going to be third through fifth grade. So, it's, it's similar programming, just for different age levels.
More analytical.
So, I'll just ask my second question, just to clarify. So, you feel like the disconnect between what the parents, some parents are asking and what you're providing is just that it's not the one program. But you feel like all the components of what is in there will reach the needs of all of those students, or as many students as possible, the same amount of students?
Absolutely. And what we showed you earlier tonight are the tier levels of supports for those kiddos that do need more explicit systemic instruction even outside core ones. So, that chart you were holding up, that's where kiddos that may have attributes of dyslexia or EL kiddos or GT kiddos or, or the 12 other categorical areas within special, within special education could fall, where we get more specific focus by the tier levels as it goes up. So, for example, a student with dyslexia or dyslexia attributes would be in the Orton-Gillingham, very dyslexic oriented structured literacy protocol and framework adoption in tier three, still in the general education setting. And then the option would also be for students with significant levels of support needed would be special education if that was a qualification piece.
And I'd like to add to that, that in addition to, dyslexia is a spectrum. It's not a concrete, you have it or you don't. There's a range. And the tiers of instruction are built to help address that range of student need. And so, again, I'd like to stress that we have a structured literacy program in each tier. And that in tier one, we're recommending Letterland for our early learners because it's incredibly engaging. In tier two, we can continue to use Letterland, but we also use PRESS, which is researched out of the University of Minnesota Center for Reading Research. That's what I was explaining to you earlier about how it is a, a targeted, skill-specific intervention for where a child's learning has broken down, so that we go back as far as we can for students to find out where it started to fall apart. Tier three, it becomes more intensive with our specialists who are trained in the Orton-Gillingham technique. And then, as I mentioned, in our special education program, we have two programs as well, Sande, which is also built on Orton-Gillingham research, and then Lyndamud Bell, which is also research to effectively address needs of dyslexic students at a more intensive level.
Director Lachlan?
So, thank you for the presentation earlier. And I, I couldn't agree more that reading truly is, it's, it's everything. It's the foundation of what our students are doing. And I think that there's nothing, in my opinion, more, more critical in terms of giving them those, those strong foundational tools. My question is, as it relates to looking at it through an equity lens in terms of when we look at historically, either historically underserved populations or students who we know have maybe not received the services that they, that they should, that they're entitled to. And you talked a little bit about it, Director Larson, but if you could just talk about, because I, I think of, you know, we've heard some, from some parents tonight, but then I think about other contingents of the population, other groups of students who we want to make sure that we are, you know, meeting the needs as best as we can. Because I think, you know, I'm not a literacy expert, I'm the first to say that. I would imagine that there's no one curriculum that is going to unfortunately, you know, meet 100% of the needs of 100% of our students. So, I think there's, you know, there's that balance, right, that we have to have some, also knowing that our students are coming to us from multiple lived perspectives, lived experiences and perspectives and things that are beyond our control. And so, what can we do that's in the purview of our control with the tools that we have to, to, you know, set them up for success as much as we can? So, that being said, that's my very circular, roundabout way of asking, can you speak to the efficacy in your professional opinion of being able, this, what you're proposing and what the Literacy Council Committee has come up with, as far as being able to serve all needs of, of all divergent and different populations that comprise our student body?
That's exactly how we got to the recommendation that we're at tonight, is by looking at all students very intentionally and looking at how the, the significant choices that we recommend and the materials and the skills and the professional development we provide to our teachers directly impacts each and every kiddo that we have. And so, when you consider the various needs of kiddos from mental health to special education to EL to GT, to all these areas, balanced literacy, the research shows, is the best way to support all learners, which is why we're doing the balanced literacy framework for core. And then we supplement with the structured literacy to help students who may have other areas of need to receive instruction and receive support. But absolutely, it's the balanced literacy model. Now, if I were, if I had slow, singularly, students with reading difficulties as it relates to written language or phonemic awareness or comprehension or decoding, and that's the only population of students I would have, structured literacy would probably be a recommended core curriculum for that group of students. But when we're educating all and we're looking at culturally responsive teaching strategies and practices that enhance and support all learners. and practices that enhance and support all learners, it's the balanced literacy model and then adding the structural literacy components to support kids where they need other adaptations and delivery modes.
May I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
So to that point, thank you for that. Again, in your professional estimation, what are some of the, the gaps that you see that exist for certain populations that maybe there's going to meet, there's going to need, be a need for supplemental support or to make sure that we're, we're not missing students because of maybe some just inherent gaps in the curriculum? How has the committee fleshed that out?
Well, our English language students rise to the front, you know, the first thing that I think of when you think of gaps. And as all districts are, we are adjusting to an increase in number of EL students. And one thing that I'm really pleased to say is that the curriculum that we've chosen, first of all, Letterland, first of all, again, it's highly engaging. It's singing, dancing, moving, characters, stories, et cetera. So it's incredibly engaging for all students. But then I'd like to speak to the units of study as well. They have designed supports for each lesson within the units of study at each grade level and each unit that are aligned through best practice in the English language learner population. So for example, they bring in the concept of how can you make, how can you bring in the concept of comprehensible input for a student who is an EL learner? And that's a Steven Krashen theory, comprehensible input, that we can help our EL students understand if we can tell stories, sing, dance, act, provide that sort of content to help them understand the learning. And so I'm really pleased to say that that component is really supportive of that population. And I guess I'd also like to say that the research out of Columbia University in New York very much shows that in comparison to New York public schools, the New York public schools who have implemented units of study have seen growth across all areas for diverse populations. And I, when I say diverse populations, I'm not just talking about language or culture. I'm talking about learning diverse learners. And across the board, each piece of research from their data shows that the schools that are implementing outperform the schools that are not implementing. And with solid support and coaching, and we have great coaches in our district who are working hard to learn how to support our teachers. So with that support, that performance goes up from, you know, we're just implementing without support to we are implementing with support.
To give you another glimpse, something that we focus on in the research suggests is how do you personalize education, which is exactly what every parent and child wants. And this absolutely personalizes literacy instruction. And the main way it does that is through the leveled libraries. Having kids, instead of teaching whole group and expecting all kids to try to be at that whole group instructional level and learn at the same rate and the same pace and the same content, having individualized books that fit their learning levels and their reading levels allows it to be personalized to whatever need that kiddo has, whether they're accelerated and they're reading at a W level and they're in first grade, or they're reading at a Level B in first grade. Instead of having to accommodate to all learners and then leave those gaps happening in the classroom, this approach and these leveled libraries allow the teacher to work with those kiddos with just right texts that glow to grow so that you can accommodate and personalize instruction. And to me, that's one of the biggest pieces for leveling the literacy playing field and learning playing field for kiddos.
And I'd like to add to this too, because I know it is a big concern with our families, some of our families in our district, some who spoke this evening, is that we are also including decodable books. And what a decodable book is, is when students learn phonics skills, they have books that are aligned to what they've learned. And so they're not expected to become guessers. One of the, one of the parents recommended that or suggested that her child was a really good word guesser, and that does happen. So we also have decodable books that are aligned very carefully with the scope and sequence within Letterland for students to practice those phonics skills and apply those phonics skills. So it's not, again, just some story or some abstract concept. So in addition to the leveled libraries, I would say we also will have decodable books as well in Tier One.
Okay, thank you.
Director Patacek?
Yes, two things. Number one, I thank you for your work, obviously, by the learning session, by what you're doing now, has taken a lot of time, effort and expertise. So I, I thank you for that. On the other hand, what could be worse? And maybe that's the wrong way to start it, but we have been spending more than an hour, two hours, discussing curriculum and discussing reading. You guys should be very pleased with that. That's what boards are supposed to do. And so even though it's painful at times, I, I think that's, that's a new high from my perspective. Having said that, Rachel, a question I have, and you referenced Grove, and, and I believe you're talking about St. Louis Park. I, I think that's where Grove Academy or the Grove Elementary School is located?
Minnetoka, at St. Louis Park physical location, yes.
Okay. And, and particularly, I think what you said, but please correct me if I misheard, that they're supposed to be pretty good at dealing with kids who have this issue, dyslexia, and, and, and teaching them and coping with them and developing those skills. But you're reluctant to bring somebody from there because there's not an objective body out there which is saying, this really works. Did I hear you correctly, or?
I didn't say I was reluctant. I said we did not invite anybody outside of the MDE dyslexia specialist. And if that's a route that is a direction we want to go, then I would suggest that if, if that's where this lies, we know what we're going to hear, structured literacy core curriculum. We can tell you that. I mean, it, it's not going to be anything different than that. So we already can tell you here that they will absolutely say they do not support units of study, just as what we've heard from parents. So the decision you have before you tonight is whether or not the District Literacy Committee is a body that will be recommending the curriculum choice for this district and our kids versus somebody who supports structured literacy for every level of the program. Because one of the pieces of structured literacy is that it is very similar. What we're saying in our approach is that a similar one-size-fits-all approach is not the approach to take. We want the balanced literacy approach so we can address the needs of all learners. But if, because we also don't have parents here that represent EL students, we don't have GT parents here, and we don't have parents of students that fit within the normalized range of education. So those voices are also not absent, are absent here.
Although you and I both know, I've worked with vendors and curriculum adoptions, that sort of thing, vendors also have a vested interest. And sometimes you need a third party in the room to balance it, no pun intended. But here's, here's the part I look at, is that the request, which we heard parents echo tonight, which I've heard in a lot of emails and a lot of calls, is they're saying, okay, let that person come in. And, and again, I agree with you, MDE is not going to give you a recommendation, the Department of Ed. That's not their business, and they try to go out of their way not to. What they can do is answer questions that come up and attempt to give that objectivity.
And we had a very valuable discussion. I've probably spent, I don't know, two and a half, three hours talking with the specialist at MDE specifically about what we're doing, how we can tweak it, what's appropriate, what's not appropriate.
Yeah. And, and your presentation tonight was powerful, effective. What I'm saying is, I think the ask, the request to have someone come in who you will have an opportunity to disagree with or whatever, and then the ultimate decision, as you said, lies up here.
Can I add just one question for, for you to clarify? I think that, I'm not sure, Shelley, if this was getting to what yours had said. One of our speakers had shared, you know, if kids are struggling in Tier One and with our, our curriculum and we move to Tier Two and have more of that support, why can't they go to Tier Three right away to the Orton-Gillingham? And there's not really, can you explain kind of that process and timeframe? Because I think sometimes folks think that has to be a long timeframe, and it really doesn't.
Yeah, no, that can be immediate based on a fall, winter, or spring, or a teacher recommendation assessment. If there is an availability in reading intervention, that kiddo can go in immediately once those parents are notified and contacted. Typically, it's the teacher recommendation that places a student in the program, but sometimes parents request it. And if there is room available, that child is immediately put into intervention. So what takes a while would be if that kiddo would be on track for data collection purposes related to a potential Special Education qualification assessment.
And I'd like to say that I can speak to a situation this winter where a Tier Three interventionist came to me specifically with concerns about a student, thinking that the student was exhibiting tendencies of dyslexia but was not diagnosed, and really wanted to get that student in a group and was asking my advice about what, you know, how should she go about doing it? And so we brainstormed ways that she could get that student into her Tier Three group right away to begin intensive Orton-Gillingham work with her.
Director Stivlin?
Thank you. Okay, so I have a few things, but I want to start out by saying thank you for putting together the presentation that you did earlier tonight. I thought it was very helpful in explaining a lot of the questions that we have had. So I appreciate that. I know that took a lot of work. I do wish that we had had an expert, as was requested, in dyslexia. And I do think that that would be a good idea in the future because I think that a big part of this is that our parents really need to feel like we are partners with them. They want to feel like they're a part of what's happening. And I don't think that that's how we feel. A lot of parents don't feel that they have been a part of it. So that leads me to my second comment, which is, I think that the committee that went through the decision-making process around this literacy program should definitely have parents on it. That should just be standard for almost every, every educational committee. I'm a very big proponent of the power of parent support and engagement with schools. And the more we invite parents to be a part of the decision-making process, the more parents will feel like that we do care about what, what, what they think. And they're the most powerful educators in the children, in the, in our children's lives, right? We have them during the day, but the parents their whole lives, right? So I think it's really important that going forward, we have parents on that committee. My next comment, or I'm not sure if it's a comment or a question, on the document that we're actually have in front of us to approve, I am not clear. I thought we were going to be voting on a $660,000 expenditure. Based on what we learned earlier, that's actually not what we're voting on. Now it is actually a $410,000 expenditure. So my question is, I think that should be the actual number that's written on this document. Instead, it says the purchase of instructional materials will be over $100,000. Well, that's, that goes without saying, that's why we're voting on it, because anything over $100,000 requires a board vote. So I'm kind of curious to know why the actual number isn't on this document. And then my second part to that is, where is that, what budget is that money going to come from? Is that coming from this year's budget? Or will that be put into next year's budget? And when do, I mean, we just had a very lengthy meeting last night about how dire our finances are going forward in the next couple of years. This is a big expense. So maybe if you could talk to that a little bit, then I have a follow-up question.
As was explained earlier at the learning session, this purchase comes out of the annual dedicated Learning and Innovation Department curriculum and PD funds that are set aside funds in the district. So those are funds that we have had annually in the department and allocated. And as I laid out, there is a very purposeful, intentional cycle of how we dedicate funds and how we prioritize funds. And so that $410,000 will come out of next year's fiscal budget. And all the adjustments have been made per planning by departments, other specialist areas, all the things that we need to take into consideration so that we ensure that we still have all the other pieces covered. So for example, in our planning of that, that financially, we know those cycles that I showed you. It wasn't detailed that you saw that map. We know when literacy is coming up, so we know there's a significant amount of money that we're planning. We don't know on what, but we know that will be set aside for that. Then there'll be science, there'll be math. And so that's how those pieces work.
And then, did you say that was about $1 million that that's set aside, that every year we're, we're looking to spend it on some?
Correct.
Some area of study? Okay. So then my second follow-up question to that is, as I understand, it's $410,000 we need to approve is to buy the actual Lucy Cockens readers, the books, right?
Those are not Lucy Cockens books.
Oh.
And Karen, you, go for it, Karen.
Because we like to be fiscally responsible, we shopped around, and we would actually be purchasing trade books from bookstores at a savings of probably $1,500 per classroom. They are trade books, so they're, they are books that you might find when you go to Barnes and Noble. They're not like a particular curriculum. I have a whole bag full of them, I can show you if you want to see, but.
So can I just ask, is that just like a normal book that you might buy if you were a parent in a bookstore?
Yes, yes.
So they're going to be familiar titles that we see everywhere?
Some of them will be, some of them will not be. And the reason some of them will not be is because, first of all, they're built around very specific thematic units. So for example, as I mentioned, since Social Studies addresses the time period of American Revolution in fifth grade, the fifth grade libraries that they're getting include a wide variety of books at different levels and around different topics related to the American Revolution. There are other science topics that are woven throughout, more inquiry investigative, investigation. At some of the younger grades, I'm thinking, okay, so like fairy tales, there's a mystery unit in third grade where students are choosing their own mysteries to read.
Okay, so they sound like great books. I mean, I, I'm never going to turn down an opportunity to buy a book. You can just ask my husband, you know? Our house is full of books. But why are these books better than what we would normally buy? Or is this not different than what we would normally buy for reading in the classrooms?
I say they include more diverse perspectives. So for example, one book that was recently taught in the fifth grade is a book that was recommended to me by Andrea Schuler Valley, a long time ago. It's called Home of the Brave. It's a, it's a book that is a poetic narrative, so it's written in poems, short, no, we're not talking Shakespearean sonnets, we're talking short, understandable narrative poetry. And it's the story of a young refugee from, I don't, I can't recall the exact country, but he was escaping a war in one of our African countries.
So it sounds like a really interesting, diverse perspective and something that might be engaging for any student, really.
Correct. And he comes to Minnesota.
Okay.
And it's his story as he believes both of his parents died during the war.
So essentially, this, this expenditure that you're asking us to approve is $410,000 of bargain-priced trade books that will go into individual classrooms to be used by students?
Correct.
This isn't really anything different than, than what we would normally buy to, to, to stock a classroom with books?
Correct.
I mean, haven't we made purchases for classrooms before?
Well, are you speaking specifically of trade books or are you speaking of other?
Level readers. I guess I'm trying to understand, how is this different than what we might have done in the past?
So in the past, classroom teachers have been left to purchase books on their own. And as a former reading teacher, granted, I was at the high school, I would scour library sales, I would save up my scholastic book points, I would spend hundreds and hundreds of dollars every year on books for my classroom to make sure that students had a wide variety of engaging and appropriately readable books to access. So historically, we have not provided that type of book for our classroom teachers. Several years ago, I believe it was 2013, we spent, I think, about 90-some thousand dollars and made an initial push to purchase books for classroom libraries. But that garnered about seven. But that garnered about seven, I would estimate, probably 70 books per classroom. And as you can imagine, that doesn't go very far and it doesn't provide much variety. And I would say that at minimum, a well-stocked classroom library should probably have upwards of 600, 700, 800 books of different varieties and different levels, different interests and such. So we, yes, we did do a push several years ago, but it was a very minor push.
Is there any other question? Shelly? Go ahead.
I was gonna, George, do you have anything?
I actually did. When I spoke to the specialist about the Wilson language training, one of her comments was, "Early identification is ideal, but it is never too late. Appropriate assistance is critical, and explicit multisensory structured language instruction is a key to success." My question is, will the proposed program allow that explicit multisensory structured language instruction?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Director Pearson?
All right, so I'm a little confused because we spent an hour and a half talking before and I don't know, 45 minutes now, about this program. But are you saying we're not voting on the program, we're just voting on level books? Or are we voting on the program?
Essentially, the vote is on both, because you're voting to approve the funds that support the program that we've brought before you.
Thank you.
So a no vote would be a vote against that.
And as a follow-up to that?
Director Stivlin?
Sorry, thank you. So then, one of my questions was, what would happen if we did vote no? What would the impact on what you've already done and what you plan to do? What would the impact be?
Well, we did reference our current MCA scores, and I don't think anybody in this room would be satisfied with Stillwater Schools performing at that level. I think we can do better. And with a well-articulated program that addresses the needs of multiple different types of students, including dyslexic students, we are much more, I know we will raise those scores.
Superintendent Pontrelli?
If everybody else is, I just have a few comments that might help connect some of the dots. I just want to remind the board that we are voting on the core, not a component. So the overall program for literacy for our kids, K-5, and then 612 will come later. I also want to remind folks that there is not a curriculum out there that's going to meet the needs of 100% of our students. If there were, that company would be rich, and every school district in America would be running after that curriculum because we all want our kids to succeed. But it's just, it's not, it just isn't out there. The folks who spoke tonight are the exact reason why we brought this review forward. From the very first day I got here, when we started looking at the data that we did have, we knew that our kids should be performing better. So the folks who came and shared their stories, I get that. I don't want that for our kids, and neither do our teachers, and I know none of the board does either. We can do better. Literacy is the foundational thing of what we should be doing for our students, and we have to do something different. The past, we didn't have the tools. We haven't had the interventions, we haven't had the specific diagnostic ability to look at where kids are, and then we haven't had the training for our staff to say, all right, if I know this, how do I address it? That hasn't happened. This is the first year that we have that. So I understand for students who went through our system before, we could have done better, and we want to do better. I think two other things I just want to comment on is that we have pre-K now in this, so we have earlier recognition for our families, and we want to attack this just as much as our parents do. And finally, we do have parents on our curriculum advisory committee, and whenever this goes through the processes, we have parents who are on that and are giving us feedback.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. We talked, you know, listening to the speakers, it was, you know, heart-wrenching because these are our kids and they're obviously have had issues that we haven't been able to address. And I appreciate what Superintendent Pontrelli has indicated, is that we're going to do better. We now have the resources, and with whatever curriculum is adopted tonight, we understand that dyslexia is a problem and we need to address it. I think, obviously, the state of Minnesota has recognized that, as also the federal government. My question is, if we adopt this, one of the things we've talked about on a board is, how do we know that it's working? So what do we see in a year from now? Director Patachik is one of the ones, persons I always listen to because he always focuses in on, how do we know that this is working? That this isn't just some fly in the pie thing, and then we're going to be back here in two years trying to come up with some different curriculum? So that's question number one. Question number two is, do you see the need in the future for a dyslexia specialist? And maybe that I can direct that to Superintendent Pontrelli, because that seemed to be the other question that a lot of people were saying. And then the only comment I have is, I want to thank, there's people from your committee here, teachers in our district, I want to thank them for coming out here tonight as well. So thank you for all your hard work on this project as well. So if you can address those two questions, that'd be great.
Thank you for that question. Being held accountable for student achievement is exactly why we're in the positions we're in. And hearing the families, you're right. It's unbelievable the struggles that some kiddos and families have to experience. And the plan before you is exactly what we believe and have thoroughly researched and looked at, will help all kids as best as we can. In looking at the data, we can look at it in various ways. So one of the ways we would look at it would be, how many kiddos are being placed and still needing reading intervention? How fast are they making progress when they're receiving intervention through Orton-Gillingham? How are the kiddos doing in the core classroom with press intervention? And how long are they staying in press intervention groups? We'd be looking at FastBridge assessment data, fall, winter, spring, and those growth rates, and where those proficiency achievement scores relate. And we'd also then look at the MCA reading proficiency scores. But importantly, we would want to look at also the classroom data from formative and summative assessments, because we don't want our kiddos to be painted by strictly achievement tests. Because as we even heard from the parents, this is, having dyslexia, if we're talking specifically about that, is one avenue. It is not related to IQ. It is not related to potential. It is not related to creativity. So making sure we step back and look at all the ways we're measuring student progress and achievement and celebrating that, but holding ourselves accountable to those data pieces that I just referenced.
Thanks. And Superintendent Pontrelli, you want to?
Sure, I can comment on briefly. And we will report to you each spring as well with the Read Well by 3rd Grade Plan, which is part of the World's Best Workforce, and that includes both MCA and FastBridge data.
Thanks, Karen.
I think we were all thrilled that now we do have a person at MDE who is a specialist who can help guide us, help guide. You know, some of the restrictions there are more than I wish that they were. But I had shared with our parents, and one of the things that many of you know, and Mike knows us being on the board of 916, I approached Superintendent Connie Hayes to ask her to reach out to other member districts to see if there was a need and if they would support having a position. Because sometimes if we can't fully support a full specialist position within our district, if we share the cost, we can do that and have the resources available for us. Much like we don't have an autism specialist for the district. We, you know, try to give our teachers training in that, but the more we can reach out to 916 and places to help support. The answer from Connie was, it was brought forward to the superintendents, they're very interested. They're gathering what districts are doing right now. They want to create common language and look at the resources that are out there, and then address if that's a need. And I'm sure that'll be coming before Mike and the others at 916 Board in the future. So would we love to have that? Yes. When we talk about priorities, and one of the folks today shared about the board needs to think about priorities, those are some of the questions we have to answer.
And it's nice that Director Patachik is the board chair for 916, so put the pressure on him.
Talk to the board?
I like the pressure. Here's a part I have a hard time on. If we vote yes tonight, what's the message to the parents who came here? Very well-intending, and that bothers me. And I think Director Stivlin touched on that as well. What I still don't think we're good at is parent involvement. I just think it should be so much better. I'm always amazed, regardless of what the issue is, how much expertise is in our community. Because what happened to these parents, they faced an issue, they had to get educated, and I think they did. In fact, I've, a couple of them know it because I've said it to them, I wish I had your coping skills, because they're so strong. And even the part of your presentation, you know, I've spent a good portion of my life in college. I know resources, I know all of that. And that had a lot of strength of what you presented. But what I miss so much is what they were able to bring. I'm saying, if I vote no, and I'll make my feelings known pretty quick, it's not because I find fault with what you did, but I find fault with the process. I think it was a little ask, not a big ask, to say, look, we'll reach in there, I have misgivings, but we can include bringing that person in. Maybe it would have taken an extra 20 minutes tonight. Maybe it would have put you on the spot, although I think we did that tonight. Not to be cruel, but to get at it. But see, I like the point, even when you had, and you said, well, this person, you know, they have a certain perspective. That's okay. Ask them about that. But even, I'm not going away from this, if we vote yes, like all their issues are being met. And I think they deserve that. So that's a long editorial, but that's where I'm coming from.
Thanks.
Yep, and we have met with those parents, me personally, five different times. So we've been very engaged with the parents listening. We just have a different perspective of what we're bringing to the table.
And I'd also like to add that, while it's not right up in front of you, we do have research that supports our choices, and we do have dyslexia specialists who support the use of letter land, including Dr. Sally Shaywitz, whom pretty much everybody knows if they, you know, if they've talked about dyslexia. And I'd also like to point out that it was referenced in the National Reading Panel report as an appropriate tool for students, and that it was also referenced in other studies as a very engaging, multisensory, systematic, explicit instruction for a bottom-up approach, which is synonymous with structured literacy.
Director Pelletier?
All right. Just a comment first, that, you know, the reason this is such a tough decision is because it is. And parents who have kids that have dyslexia are, you know, I've met, like I shared earlier with my own daughter, but she has a really good friend who came to me just sobbing during the campaign, actually. And she said, here I thought I had a naughty daughter who was just naughty, and she went all the way up until she was 17 years old and didn't even know she had dyslexia. So I would have, I have to say, I would have really liked to have had the ask for the expert, whomever it is, just come and have an additional, just provide some additional feedback. And it's not, I need to stress this, it's not because of lack of trust, because you have done a wonderful job, and I just want to thank you so much. I just think that we can't get enough information, it's a lot of money, and we have an opportunity here to really set the bar high and do something that's remarkable. And I brought the question up earlier, so that was my comment. The two questions I still struggle with are, one, I brought it up earlier, the press, the press part of it, I feel like that seems to be an area, that's an area of question for me, and it was an area earlier when you explained it, you know, when you say you're digging down through the diagnostic data, how does that, how does that work for the dyslexic kid, number one? And then, two, the structured literacy, many parents talked about that tonight. I don't, there's a disconnect there, and I just want to feel good, I just, I understand that there may be different opinions, and what do you do with that? You can't do anything about that. But if you could just kind of sell me on those two, I would appreciate it.
Well, I'd like to, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we are speaking specifically tonight about Tier One, which would be the letter land and units of study.
Okay.
But I would like to address your question about press in Tier Two. Again, it's a program out of the University of Minnesota, designed by them, out of the Minnesota Center for Reading Research. And as I mentioned before, what happens is, if you have a student who is struggling with reading, whether they're dyslexic or not, those students will be screened three times a year, and then the teachers work together collaboratively within their professional learning communities to examine the data through a very specific protocol to determine what is the exact issue of their need. So I think for a long time, what has happened is, if a student is disfluent with their reading, meaning they're reading very slowly, or they're making a lot of mistakes, or it's choppy, I think a lot of times what has happened is, people have said, oh, they're not doing this right, we just need to hammer them with fluency. Well, that's not the case. There are underlying foundational skills that might be lacking. And a lot of times, those are foundational skills that are lacking with dyslexic students. And so it's imperative that we keep digging farther and farther and farther back. And I've stressed with our upper-level teachers that just because you have a 5th grader or a 6th grader, doesn't mean that they're, you know, they're not missing that sound connection, that phonemic awareness that's at the very base of the skill tier. And we really need to go back and back and back to find out what is missing. And if we have a 6th grader or a 5th grader who is missing that, and remember, we're talking K-5 specifically right now, but some of our 6th grade teachers are using press, we'll talk more about that next year. It's imperative that we address that need, so we do not end up in situations where we have students who feel like failures, where we have students that we could have helped. We are working on a program to identify and remediate for students who aren't responding to our initial Tier One. And press is just the first line of support after Tier One to help us to address those needs. And I would say it's targeted very much to students with reading difficulties, as well as students with dyslexia.
Thank you.
Good. I guess, Director Stivlin, you had a question?
Yeah, so I think one of the big problems that we're having here is that a significant number of parents have not been convinced that their children with special needs in literacy are going to have their needs met, you know? And I think maybe they're still not convinced. And even after all of this discussion and the presentation earlier, I don't know if I'm convinced. I think there's a lot going on here. This isn't, you know, a huge plan, it's a big expense. I still don't know why it's better than what we're currently doing. All I know is what you're saying. I don't know exactly why, you know? I don't know what is better about this than what we're currently doing. And I just want you to know that the long list of all the different resources that you sent to us, I looked them up. A bunch of them were books, and I wasn't going to buy the whole book, but the things that I was able to find, I read, and there was some really good information in there. A fair amount of that was actually articles in support of the Lucy Cockens or other likewise, like similar approaches. But even, one article that I did find that you, wasn't on your list, suggested that there isn't a lot of research showing that it's beneficial. There really isn't, other than what they have produced themselves, it shows it's beneficial. What Lucy Cockens and all of her supporters have produced, maybe Heinemann, whoever, have produced a lot of research showing, you know, that it's helpful, but they're the ones selling the materials. So I just want to say, one of the things that I found was actually from the Minnesota, University of Minnesota, and I really liked it. It's, "Reading Growth in High Poverty Classrooms: The Influence of Teacher Practices That Encourage Cognitive Engagement in Literacy Learning." And there was a line in here that, there's just the abstract was all I pulled up. And they did some research, and they looked at learning's growth and specific teacher strategies in the classrooms over across 88 different teachers. And one of the things that they found in this study, it says this, "Looking across all of the data, the most consistent finding was that teachers who emphasize higher-order thinking, either through questions they ask," thinking, either through questions they asked or the tasks they assigned, promoted greater reading growth among the nine target students in all of the classrooms." And I think that the reason why that's important to me is because I really do feel like it almost doesn't matter what the program is. It matters what the teacher is actually doing. And the teacher in each classroom, whether they believe in it, and whether they are passionate about learning, are passionate about reading, and they compel their students to have that same kind of passion, that's what matters more than anything else. And so, having said all that, I really do feel like this is an enormous expense that we really don't have at this time in our district. We have a lot of things coming up that we need to be looking at, and I am concerned about this expenditure. And I am still concerned about the fact that the actual amount that we're being asked to vote on is not actually listed on the document that we're using in here. So I'm not really sure if that's, why that's like that, so.
All right. Are there any other questions? Otherwise, I'm going to call, close this up. So are there any motions on the table? Anyone would like to make a motion at this point?
I would make a motion.
Okay.
Somebody, go ahead.
Director Loughlin.
So I've had the chance to talk with, just like many of the fellow board members up here, with parents who've shared their stories with Superintendent Pontrelli, with Director And I want to echo what Director Pelletier said, because I'm the first to say, I am not a literacy specialist, and I am not one to stand in judgment of a committee with how many decades of expertise who've been studying and researching this. I also go back to one of my, you know, my kind of core values of nothing about us without us. And how can we have the most inclusive, informed decision with all stakeholders? I think, you know, something that just came to mind, and it may not be relevant, but some of you might be familiar with what happened in Minneapolis. And, you know, and being in the professional field of equity and just knowing in terms of what does culturally responsive curriculum look like, and what are the interpretations, you know, that's something else that comes to mind in terms of, you know, not just parents whose students have struggled with dyslexia, but others as well, just other stakeholder groups that, you know, being able to have input. I am the first to say, I want to be mindful of our role as board members. I don't think most districts get into the minutia like this in terms of approving curriculum. So I want to be mindful of that. That being said, it's here before us, and I just want to make sure that we are being as mindful as possible to include as many voices while honoring the expertise and the work that the committee has done. Because I, like I said, I don't want at all send the message that their work is not to be recognized and considered. So I would like to make a motion, because I don't think that, Director Stivlin, I don't think that we can't adopt nothing. And I know that's not what you're saying, but I don't, are you saying that we just continue with what we're doing and not look at a new curriculum? Because I think that we need to, I would like to further audit of this one as a board. And if that is, you know, something that, you know, at our next board meeting, we can look at, so I'll just put that motion on the table.
So you would like to table this decision?
Right.
Okay. So there's a motion to table. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. I'm going to call for a roll call vote, Barb, so you can get this down.
Can I ask a clarification before?
Sure.
When we say table, are we just saying table to the next board meeting?
Yes.
So I guess, I don't know if I can say something now. I feel like this is a longer-than-the-next-board-meeting thing. And I, so my thought is that no question about what you guys have done has been amazing, and no question about our staff and all that they did with their information. But I'm afraid, because this is such a hot topic right now, that we don't, that all the information isn't available for us to make a decision right now, that we may need to delay a year or something to know whether this is the best decision. And so I'm not comfortable tabling just till the next meeting, but would need.
Well, we could, it can be table till you bring it back off the table. And technically, a motion to table is not debatable. So with that, I understand where you're going. So technically, we could keep tabling it, or, you know, it could be.
So what if we voted no? What would happen then? If we voted no to the curriculum?
If you vote.
No, can I just put?
There's a motion on the floor.
Hang on a second.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. What does, can you please clarify what it means to table? What exactly will that mean?
That we will not vote on this issue, and it will be taken off of the, basically, the agenda.
Okay. Until?
Until it's brought back up in front of the board.
Or we vote no.
So we don't need to clarify why, or for what purpose?
No, it's really, it's not debatable. It's just a vote to table. And unfortunately, yeah, we would be delaying this.
If we were to vote on the table and it passed, could we then have discussion about what we want to see happen after that?
Sure.
Is that something we would have to?
I think the district would appreciate that, because they have a lot riding on this curriculum going forward and training that's going to be coming up. So if this doesn't pass, or gets tabled, we're going to have to have a serious conversation about how this goes forward because of the PD, that's professional development, that's already scheduled and gone to work. So with that, Barb.
Question, clarification question. I think Paula's motion is till the next meeting? Am I correct?
But you said you can't quantify it.
You can't quantify it.
Robert's rules, I guess.
It would be till.
Delay.
To delay it.
Yeah, it's really not table, it's delay.
All right. Barb, could you please call the roll on the vote, motion to table slash delay this?
Absolutely. Board Chair Lehman?
No.
Vice Chair Pelletier?
Yes.
Treasurer Pearson?
No.
Oracle Loughlin?
Yes.
Director Hapner?
No.
Director Patachek?
Yes.
Director Stivlin?
No.
One, two, three, four noes, three yeses.
Okay. So that does not pass. Is there any other motions?
I would make a motion to approve the literacy curriculum purchase.
I'll second. Any discussion?
I'll say something I would like to explain. I feel like an enormous amount of work has been put into the presentation that we heard tonight. A lot of parents are very present and concerned. I feel like we need to make a decision on this one way or the other tonight. If there's more information that we need in order to make this decision, I think before we were to go forward, we should know what that is. We should talk about what that is. And I voted no to table because I was uncomfortable with that unknown. I don't want to just keep putting this off, you know? We need to be responsible and move on, so.
Can I make one comment that might help?
Sure.
So my question, really, what, we've been working a lot on what is the question, right? Is the question that the board does, wants to change the philosophy of literacy within the district? Because our current philosophy says that we believe in a balanced literacy approach. This is for core, so this is, you know, across the top. Is the question really for you, yes, we want balanced literacy, but we want to make sure we take care of our students who are, who have tendencies with dyslexia, making sure that we have a really strong tiered intervention program? Or is it that you want to change the philosophy from your balanced literacy approach to a structured literacy approach?
I think Superintendent Pontrelli, that's a decision that each one of us has to make. But I appreciate you laying it out that way, because that's really how I'm looking at it in voting the way I will vote. So Director Stivlin?
I appreciate that comment, and I do think that that is what we're doing, is being thoughtful. But for me, it's the investment in, it's an enormous investment that I don't think we should be making right now. For me, it's something that we could be using in a different, those funds could be used in a different way that would have a much higher impact, in my opinion. Or if we were to put it off and implement this plan next year, say, for example, then we would have more time to get the experts in and really make sure that all of those pieces are very clear, and that we've shared all of that information in a really comprehensive way with our parents and with our community and with the board.
Thank you for sharing. Director Pearson?
For me, I think it's just, I would rather delay than pass it today and then have to wait five years before we figure out that, because this is such a hot topic now, and because there's so much happening, I don't want to have to get way down the road before we can do something that's right. So I'd rather have a year gap than maybe a five-year gap.
Director Loughlin?
So can Superintendent Pontrelli, can you lay out just the material impact in terms of if this does not pass, so we go back to ground zero, so to speak, in terms of, just like you said, examining that question as a board, looking at different curriculum? Do we, because I, that's where I differ with maybe some of my colleagues. I don't think we can wait a year or five years. Our students need.
Three years, more than three years ago, they needed something.
Right, right. I mean, I was on the board when, you know, TNI, or, excuse me, TNL, you know, was, for lack of a better word, gutted. And we lost so many reading specialists. We changed a curriculum, and I think that what I'm hearing from teachers is they are, our students, most importantly, need something. So for me, it's not an option to be able to wait a year or five years. That's why I thought a delay, if we could, a couple more weeks, a month, but certainly not that expansive time. But what happens if it does not pass?
Well, for.
What's the impact on our kids?
Right. Well, I mean, first of all, we had conversations about where our kids are with their literacy and their proficiency. I mean, our students need to be doing better. I mean, our parents shared with us tonight. Their responses, most of, I tried to write down most of the ages, but most of them are students who are, at the end, or have already gone through our elementary experience. We have some who are just starting. Nobody's experienced this, except for our teachers who have piloted or down at Brookview with the new system. There's an incredible amount of professional learning that needs to go into this to make sure that our teachers are prepared for it. And so it's not really, if you, if you take a year before making the decision, then you're going to be another year before you have your staff trained to be able to implement that. The resources, I think some of our Brookview teachers could tell you, and some of you I know, I think Director Stivlin and Director Hapner had taken a tour, maybe others of you did, down at Brookview, to see the amazing resources that we've piloted at that. Kids are engaged, and they're learning. And that is your responsibility as a board, yes. Kids across the board need to be engaged in learning. The other piece I want to say is, you know, we'll continue to work with parents. This doesn't have to be, your approval of the core curriculum doesn't mean that, oh, we're done, and we don't want to have any more conversations. We're happy to do that, just like we do with our parents whose students are on the autism spectrum, or who are EL learners. We're happy to learn more and continue to beef it up. If you look across the state, some of the things that were on the MDE website about having early screening, awareness with our early childhood, we have them on board. The interventions we have in place, structured literacy is part of the core. There are a number of things that we have within our district already. Every interventionist trained in Orton-Gillingham and every building, most districts would love that. And so we've begun to make the differences that we need for our students, but it does take time. And that's the intervention level. It's not the core that we're asking you to approve. The other piece is, I couldn't agree more that we have lots of needs financially. We have a ton of needs, public schools really do. But if literacy is the main thing for our kids, and we know we aren't doing well, I think that needs to be a priority for the board. Because if you're going to hold us accountable, we need to have the materials and the resources to be able to teach kids well.
So let me ask one more question of my colleagues. So, board members, what are, for those of you who are not comfortable with an affirmative vote, what is a timeline that, I know, Shelley, you said?
Well, and I appreciate what you say. And so I, I don't feel like by next month we can know. But I'm, I'm fine digging in, having the team dig in and do it sooner than that. I just, I know that we can't do enough in the next two weeks, or in the next one month to get enough. But it doesn't need to be a year for me. It just needs to be more than a month.
Personally, two concerns.
Director Patachek.
Thank you.
Yep.
Denise, I like how you phrase that, when you ask question one, and you ask question two. I'm question two. So I'm saying, one of my major concerns is the 20% that we've heard tonight that don't feel they're being heard. So I'm saying that affects. I also think, and part of it's a leftover of last night, and the financial conditions that we're in, and the flexibility to make choices among that. So I'm saying, I asked Bob last night, I said, give me that sheet, and you were kind enough to do it. And it really was examples of where money could be allotted. And I haven't put that in any kind of order yet. Is literacy close to the top for me? Yes. Is it the top? I'm not sure. I'm not convinced. And so what I'm saying is, I will probably vote no, but it's not never. It's more, give us some time. And I think part of what, and I can't speak to that, is we've got to establish a consensus of at least four board members who say, this is the time, this is what I need to get there.
Can I, I want to follow up with what Director Patachek said. Can you vote in favor of this and also address the second question, that we're supporting the district with regards to this curriculum, but some may have the concern that we need to strengthen Tier Two interventions? Is that kind of where? Can you, can you do both by voting in favor of this?
I'm going to say yes.
Okay.
Well, what we really need somehow to tack that on, then, is an amendment.
To say what?
Well, I think the vote, as it stands right now, Mr. Hapner moved was to adopt the proposal.
And to strengthen, and you would like to see maybe adding in to strengthen Tier Two intervention?
And particularly to address the concerns.
Of dyslexic?
Correct.
Okay. So let me just follow up on that. So is that something that administration can do if that's how this vote goes with regards to that amendment?
Yes.
Okay. So could.
You have to ask if he can, if he supports the amendment.
What are you, Robert's rule?
Sorry.
I'll throw in, whatever friendly amendment you want to propose, I will.
And then I had one other question to Director Stivlin's point. Is there a way to put a number in that? If it's 410, can we put 410,000 into the, into the motion?
660.
I would say yes, unless I get trumped to my left. But I think to clarify that, with the whole, the whole literacy package that you saw that was laid out in front of you was 660. The one component of that package is the $410,000 purchase. That's the only piece of that that is over the threshold. So that maybe is the confusing part, is we're not asking you to approve one or the other. We're asking you to approve the whole package. But because of how the finance and policy works, the one piece of that is over that $100,000 threshold in and of itself.
Do we also have to approve the plan?
Well, you're approving the plan. You're approving, and I think that's part of the conversation, is if we back it up, what we're asking for, and this has been mentioned a couple times. What we are recommending, based on going through the process of working with our teachers, that we on multiple occasions in this district say are experts, and are the ones that know what's going on. We've gone through that process. We've brought this to our curriculum advisory committee, who does have parents on it. They've approved it. We're asking for the approval of the core curriculum. To that initial question, could you still, so Shelley, this comes to your, or Director Pearson, to your, to your question, we absolutely could still. to your question, we absolutely could still take more time and address and look at what needs to happen specifically for the dyslexia needs that were brought up tonight. Could you still do that? Absolutely. Again, I'll just remind people that we're not asking for money above and beyond in this. That money is allocated inside of our original curriculum budget. So it isn't, it isn't that it's an exorbitant amount above and beyond. It is, I guess what we're telling you is, from a curriculum standpoint, from a learning standpoint, literacy is our number one priority right now. It's what we need in our district. It's what we need to work on. And our, we've invested a ton of time and energy into what Director Stivlin has talked about, in that it's much more important, making sure we support our teachers and train them properly, and make sure that they understand how to deliver that curriculum with fidelity, and be able to monitor, adjust, differentiate, work inside of that sandbox. And that is what I think is so powerful about how we're moving this literacy core curriculum forward, is that's exactly how we've done it in the pilot phase. That's exactly, coming full circle, Director Stivlin, to your question about the total cost of the package. That's why the money is split out. And that's what Director Hepner mentioned, I think, last board meeting, was the idea that the interesting thing about this curriculum adoption is it isn't all about the textbooks or the teacher additions. This is about books in classrooms that go in the hands of kids and the training for the teachers. And that's a whole new world that we're moving into, which is the right direction.
Director Pearson, and then I'll...
Well, I just want to maybe clarify, maybe ask a question. I'm afraid that amendment that we added is going to cost additional funds. So we need to be careful about adding an amendment that, when we know after last night, what, what our budget's going to look like.
I would say this, it would cause us to readjust what we have in our current budgeting going into 1819, depend upon what we find. My, here's my, honestly, my fear is that if we, with the core curriculum piece, the units of study out of Teachers College, that's a very highly competitive piece to get teachers trained on by that college. That's, that's what I'm worried about. We're going to lose out on for that component of this if we don't continue to move down the road for the core curriculum and keep that consistency. And that's been a huge and important part to our teachers and the success that they've had. But yes, you're right. We'll reallocate stuff. I mean, it's, it's kind of like I was explaining at the learning session. This is kind of, I get this sandbox of curriculum and professional development, and the directors come to me and say, here's what, what it's going to do. And that's how what we do, is we readjust, just like your own budget, and figure out how we make it work. Or we come to you for more.
Which, I appreciate that. And I appreciate, I just want the staff to know, I really do appreciate everything that you've done and the work that's put into it. I just am not ready yet. I need more information and I need a little more time. So I apologize for that and I appreciate your work, but that's where I'm at.
Director Stivlin.
Okay, thank you. I, I don't think my answer has actually come yet. I still don't know what the amount is we're voting on. And I still don't know if we're voting on this plan. And I still don't know where that money is going to come from. If it's coming from next year's budget, then it isn't already in a budget. It isn't in a budget yet.
Because we do a three year...
We haven't created that until June. So that money certainly could be freed up for something else.
The money is planned to come out of the curriculum budget?
Next year.
And we do have a three-year budget.
And you have a three-year budget.
Right. So it is in there already.
Oh, that budget, okay.
So, and we are voting on the plan and the money, both of those.
I guess maybe this would explain it to you. You are voting on a plan that in totality will cost $660,000 for this iteration.
Thank you. That's what I needed to hear.
However, inside of that plan, so that we are making sure we are abiding by your board policy, there is one component in there on its own that's over $100,000. And we wanted to make sure we are following those guidelines, and that's that 410. That's why it's kind of confusing. But yes.
Director Pelletier.
Just, this is going to be a question. Is, is it possible, and maybe it's for you, Bob, is it possible to add some sort of an addendum to the, to the motion to request a, some sort of ongoing communication with an expert, a dyslexic expert as the curriculum kind of moves forward, like a check-in type of, type of ask? Is that something? I don't, I don't know what that looks like. I'm just, I feel like this was a big disconnect tonight with, with a lot of the families that, and I'm trying to find a way to bridge that gap. And I'm wondering if that's something that we can, we could consider in some sort of economical way to have a, some sort of a communication with, with, with an expert. One of, there have been many that have been suggested. I don't, it's not my job to suggest that, but I'm just asking the question.
Director Hepner.
But I, I'm going to, not good answer for you. What I'd like to do is have a resolution as a board for 916. I know Denise has approached Connie, but I think we should be saying to 916, we, we need teacher trainers and we need the dyslexia specialist. And I think a resolution from our board that would start that, just like we started the special ed resolution back, and then have Mike pass out the resolution to the other districts that are at 916. If, if there's an issue like that, to me, that's why we're in 916, to advocate for stuff like that. Not that they just bring stuff to us and say, oh, we need to build a building over here. Okay, we'll go along with that. I think it's our purpose, if you will, as a board, to say, we have this resolution. We want you to, you know, I mean, Denise has already approached Connie. I'm sure they had a nice conversation. But I think it needs to be stronger than that.
Yeah.
I...
That's the way I would go for the dyslexia specialist.
I advocate that as well, so...
Director Potajek.
Well, one of the things you got to realize, and I know, Denise, you know this, keep in mind, the costs will come back to you. So I mean, even if...
That's one way they could do it.
Well, that's how they're funded.
Well, yeah, but you, you know there's money that could be moved around, just like we're talking here. There's money at 916. They've got a pretty good budget. I've seen some of their costs.
Here's what I'm saying. The way 916 works, there are many programs in 916, depending on those you choose to access in collaboration with other school districts are charged back to you. So let me give you an example. They can run your ALC for you. But ultimately, you pay the piper. It's not like they've got free money to give out. Now, here's the advantage of doing it with 916. So I'm, I'm with you on that. Collectively, the question could be posed to 14 districts, and sometimes geography plays a role. Could we share the services of a specialist? Or, or that sort of thing?
Our teacher trainer.
You bet. And I like that idea. I think they would be receptive to that. As far as the board itself, Denise mentioned it's been presented to superintendents. It has not come up at the board table.
Oh, and it won't for a few, few weeks. Because if you remember, Connie shared it with the superintendents, then they all have to go back, check with their people. They're going to make a, have a meeting where they come together to talk about common language and needs. Like everything else, it's a process. But she was supportive and it seemed like people were at the tables.
And that's the kind of thing, you're, you're correct, that 916 does. And, and they have the economy of, of scale, because it's as big.
Right. And there are a number of...
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
A number of positions that over the years, for instance, when we were all digging into assessment and kind of return on investment, that was something that 916 hired for a short amount of time to give districts the jumpstart and the expertise. So there's kind of some discretionary money that, that can be used for something like that.
The, the last thing I'd say too, is that this doesn't solve the motion that's before us. Because it, what, in, in essence, you're doing, the bill that went to the legislature two years ago for dyslexia asked for a number of specialists around the state. I think there were six or seven either, each one of those regions. That part of the bill didn't make it. The part that followed in the following year to add somebody at MDE or the Department of Ed did make it. So I think this is more of a groundswell, if it comes from there, from the grassroots. And, and I welcome that. But at the same time, I don't want to distract from the motion and the amendment that's there, which talks about the here and now. That other is not precluded from happening.
Just a question, then, can we call the vote? I'm just wondering if we can do that. And then, and secondly...
I don't think there was a second to the amendment, but am I correct?
Okay, just one second. Chair Lehman, the last I have is George Hepner made a motion to pass the literacy curriculum purchase.
And to add...
And you seconded it.
Yep.
And the amendment should be...
To add, in addition to passing this curriculum, to strengthen intervention in Tier Two, looking at one of the issues of dyslexia, I believe is what you were kind of intimating. Okay.
So the question is, to the point of the resolution, does that come as a secondary motion after this motion is, or, or do we, it was a friendly...
A friendly amendment, and I, I...
A strong resolution was a secondary amendment to the motion?
Yes. So with that, I'm going to call the question. So does everyone understand the motion first?
Yes.
Okay. Barb, could you please do a roll call?
Certainly.
If you're, let me say this. If you're in favor of this motion, you're going to vote aye. Okay. And raise...
And could you read, could you read the motion one more time, please?
I can.
Go ahead.
The motion is to adopt the literacy curriculum and also strengthen Tier Two interventions with emphasis on dyslexia.
Second, the secondary amendment is, is what?
Is to adopt, not only adopt the motion, but to add to it strengthening Tier Two with an emphasis on dyslexia.
What about the 916 part of it?
That, I'm assuming George can bring that up after.
I'll bring that resolution.
Yeah.
Bring a resolution in what capacity?
You can make a motion to adopt a resolution after this. All right.
Ready for the roll call vote?
Okay.
Board Chair Lehman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Pelletier?
Aye.
Treasurer Pearson?
Nay.
Clerk Lachlan?
Aye.
Director Hepner?
Aye.
Director Potajek?
Aye.
Director Stivlin?
Nay.
Five aye, two nay.
Thank you very much. Let's take a five-minute break. All right. The final action item tonight is the Transportation Terminal Property Purchase Agreement, and Director Holheisel.
Thank you, Board Chair Lehman, Superintendent Pontrelli, School Board members. Tonight, I am bringing a purchase agreement in front of the school board, asking, looking for your approval. And I want to talk briefly about, we've had this conversation now for three years, and I just want to kind of go over a little bit of the history of, you know, why a new bus terminal? Why are we here? In November and December of 2014, the Long Range Facility Planning Committee came before the school board with a plan of how the facilities in our entire school district, what the future of that is, what needs were presented. That was the committee's purpose. And that committee was composed of staff, community members. I believe there were board members that also sat on that, on that group. They came forward with a plan. And what was added to that plan, based on community feedback, was that we should look to purchase a bus terminal. And so that was just, again, November, December of 14. In February of 2015, the school board voted to move forward to bring that question to election, to the voters. In May of 15, the voters approved that proposal, which was $97.5 million. When approving that proposal, there was approval for specific items. It was the addition of an elementary school. It was grade configuration, addition to the high school, various projects that were a part of that. As I've said, one of those projects was a bus terminal. And I have heard from one of the speakers tonight that why can't we just use the funds and use that to support programming needs, staffing needs throughout the district, maybe to help support the deficit spending? And with bond proceed dollars, voter-approved dollars, we don't have that flexibility. As we talked about at the learning session last night, there are particular buckets that monies get put into. And once those monies are in there, we can take the general fund and that can spill over to various other buckets. But you can't take the other buckets and pour them into the general fund. So the money that remains in our building construction fund is, can only be used for the projects that were approved in the May of 15 vote, and nothing else. If we don't use it for those purposes, you do have the option to give it back to your taxpayers, but that is what you are restricted and limited to. Under desirable, the desirable column, it also states that it saves general fund dollars that can go towards student learning. And this might cause a little confusion as far as if we can't use bond proceeds to help support the general fund, how do we have general fund dollars that we save? Even back in 2014, the Long Range Facility Planning Committee estimated that we would receive a savings of approximately $250,000 in efficiencies. And this is how it works. We spend money, and Mr. Davis also spoke to this at open forum, we spend money on a bus terminal. That comes out of the general fund. We also pay our transportation company to drive the buses for us. They, they bid rates, we select the lowest rate, and we move forward with what we pay. With securing our own property, we actually, even though the lease dollars are reimbursed to us, because as Ben mentioned, there's a sublease to Minnesota Central, so they pay us. So essentially, the lease is neutral, but we receive better rates because of, we have a terminal. Once we have our own terminal, we are actually in a current agreement with Minnesota Central that we would actually receive revenue of $200,000 a year. So that helps support the general fund. In addition, that it's, it's general, it's revenue that is coming in specifically to the general fund. There are operational costs, which we estimate to be around $80,000 to $85,000. But still, it's a net gain of $120,000 to the general fund. It's also a net gain to the general fund as far as, and Director Potajek said this when discussing about 916, about future costs. When costs are incurred, they're transferred to their user. I believe the quote was, you know, someone has to pay the piper. When a vendor absorbs the costs, transportation increase if they're renting a terminal outside of the district, longer, longer drive times, different rates, we get quoted because ultimately, someone has to pay the piper. So even though the original investment is coming from bond proceeds, the impact, once we are past that initial investment, is to the general fund. And that is long-going. Provides adequate space for operations. Currently, right now, we do not have that at the facility, at the facility that we're housed. And I'll go into that detail a little bit further in the next slide. And then ensures safe and flexible space for maintenance and staff training. This piece of it, you know, and again, I'll talk about the current location as far as, as the needs for the, for the workspace in which they help assist in the safety of transporting 7,700 still at our area schools' children every day. Sustainable, again, provides a long-term solution to annual transportation needs. It's a, it's a one-time expense on a building that eventually will, that will sustain, and limit hopefully our exposure, exposure to future expenses in the future. Plus, it doesn't, with, we're currently under a leasing situation. And with leasing, we don't control necessarily the destiny. Should, we, we heard from Mr. Stefan at the last school board meeting, the property is for sale. Should he choose to sell that property? Now, we don't currently have a place to house our, our transportation terminal, and we're now searching for property probably outside of the district. So this would lock in a spot in perpetuity until we choose to not want that spot anymore. Again, allows us to negotiate more effective terms with multiple vendors, benefiting the general fund, an ongoing source of revenue, and becomes a district asset. And again, if you were to look, and I speak a lot to kind of the home ownership piece of it, if you were to look and say, do I rent a home or do I buy a home? And that is a very personal decision for many reasons. But when people buy a home, that home, you invest equity and it becomes an asset for you, should you decide that that is not the avenue or you want to do something different in the future. that is not the avenue, or you want to do something different in the future. Feasibility, it is supported by one-time bond proceeds. What was set aside, or what was put to the voters, was $3.5 million in 2015. At the time we sold the bond in May, we actually did much better with the initial sale, and actually received an additional $2 million right at the time of the sale. And so, that $2 million was not budgeted for any other project that was identified in the referendum. However, it was there to support any other project in the referendum. And then, as money, as time went on, we, I had time to invest the money over the course of two years, and those additional earnings equated to approximately $800,000. So, we have additional funds beyond the $3.5 million that we can use from bond proceeds. Tuesday of this week, there were board members, and it was a public meeting, so of course, the community members could have attended. We had, did, we did a walkthrough of not only our current location, but the proposed location. And I'm going to just speak briefly about the current location. Inadequate workspace for vehicle maintenance. As we walked through, we could see that the way that the garage under which Minnesota Central is working under is inefficient. If you're working on the front of a bus, you can't work on the back of a bus. The building isn't attached to other buildings, so you could be running from one building to the next for pieces. There is actually a mechanic or two that work outside all year long. And so, if that, heaven forbid, that mechanic actually get, be outside in zero-degree weather, and their hands are really cold, and they can't maybe tighten a bolt so much, not, again, I would never question the maintenance, but sometimes things happen when people aren't operating in the best facilities for, especially for a maintenance piece, which could be honestly a safety component for not only the drivers, and the mechanics, and the staff, for our students. Not enough parking for the buses. There is a remote lot that is currently leased by Minnesota Central that houses approximately 20 buses and the staff members that support it. There is a lack of onsite employee parking. We do have employees that park off the site of the current Minnesota Central location. That causes issues with Washington County plowing, those sorts of things. Limited spaces for training and safety meetings. There, they have a room that serves as a break room and a training room. It's not large enough. They have to break out their employee meetings into groups to be able to fit different people in. The walls aren't insulated and protected with noise well, which makes it a barrier for training purposes. And then, older, the older buildings are in need of extensive repair or improvement. And there was a conversation with Mr. Stefan about, you know, the purchase price, and how his purchase price is significantly less than the $5 million of the proposed site. And that, that's true. I think, I would be remiss not to say that both sites need remediation. The parking lot for the proposed site would need to be done, and, but the, what we don't know is, the repairs and improvements, we've seen a dollar amount of approximately $4 million that would be, need to be done at the current site. We don't have a current Phase One report. The board backed away from that, or moved away from that during the school board meeting earlier this year. We would need to do that. My estimate is, based on our environmental company, we would need to move into a Phase Two environmental study. I would anticipate soil remediation, because even as Mr. Stefan identified, there is debris below the surface level, just various components beyond the initial purchase price that I would ask you to consider. With the proposed location, it is a newer building in good repair. The people that had the opportunity to walk through, I, you can certainly, please take your opportunity to speak to that tonight. It, there, it does have adequate square footage for office space and bus maintenance. It is a, I believe it's a five stall, with the sixth stall being a wash bay for maintenance, and the office space is actually attached. And so, to the efficiency of having all items and all personnel in one building would be a positive. Sufficient onsite parking for buses and employees with room for growth, and this is why, again, why there would need to be parking lot remediation to accommodate that, because right now, it's not designed for that many people and that many buses, and that's why we would look to invest money into that. And there is suitable meeting spaces for staff. As I had mentioned, how do we pay for this? And it is the $3.5 million that was allocated, the additional bonds, money that is available, and the interest earnings. Bond proceeds cannot be used for operational expenses. And I would like to say, as have, as we have looked and talked about, the building construction fund, with the exception of our playgrounds, and we've talked about Lake Elmo, and we've talked about Anderson receiving their surfaces, there's a, there's a handful of playgrounds that still haven't used their money. It's still available to them, but other than the bus terminal and those individual playground surfaces, all of our other projects are substantially complete, meaning our exposure to any of financial risk of spending proceeds that might, that we don't see something coming along the way, is essentially non-existent. So, that, this is the money we have left, for the most part, and that's where we stand. So, I, I guess I will open it up to the board to answer questions, or-
All right. If, we can just really limit it to questions because of the late hour, and then we'll have plenty of opportunity to discuss amongst the board our feelings on that, but if you have any specific questions for Kristin, this would be the time to ask. Director Stivland?
Want a motion first?
No, I'd rather just do the questions first.
Question first? Okay. Thank you very much. In looking over the actual documents that you gave to us that we're voting on, it, it appears that there is a significant contingency, actually, two different contingencies, on whether or not the current owners of this piece of land will be able to split out the 11 acres from the 75 total amount that is currently for sale. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, in the document, it says that, that it would have to go through all of the different government agencies that have oversight over that piece of land to get approvals. And if any one of them disagrees with that plan, the whole, this whole plan falls apart.
That's correct.
Okay. And, and in order to, so in order to, so that's the first piece. The second piece is, they, in order to get the permission to split out this piece of land, they also have to get permission to move the frontage road? Is that what I understand?
That is, that is an accurate statement. The owner has been working with the city of Lake Elmo, and I believe they're already in design and engineering phase, but it is an accurate statement to say they need approval.
So, but that would also fall probably under, not just Lake Elmo, but maybe Washington County and other people for road approvals, to change the frontage road?
I, I don't, I am not versed in the permitting process of a frontage road, but they would need the proper approvals.
Because, I mean, to move a road, that's, that's not going to be the expense of the seller.
Yes, it is.
The, the road, the actual road construction is going to be the expense of the seller?
Yes, it is.
Oh, so they just, they're going to pay for the movement of the road, they just need the permits? Is that correct?
That is my understanding.
Okay. And, what's my other question? Somebody else take a question, I'll, come back to me.
All right. Director Pelletier?
All right. I had, I had a lot, and I, I'm saying this more for the purpose of, of my colleagues as well as the public, because I just, I think I'm maybe not the only one who has the same question. So, can you confirm that we have truly looked at all other options to the best of your knowledge? Have, what about the idea of moving the buses? This came to me by someone, you know, even something like behind the schools. As one option, cost-saving option. What about the transportation costs? I do believe that Ben Davis alluded to this earlier, but if you could just clarify for that, that we're not going to have some additional fee structure that we didn't intend upon with this decision. And then, you did hit that in the slide. It was very, really wanted to make sure that, you know, some, like Lake Elmo, for example, in the, in the bond, Brookview with the bond. Have we completed our projects? If we haven't, is the money there for the projects? That money will not go away for anything that is not done, finished. And I know, we talked about this earlier, but I just think, for the sake of the public, I'd love to just hear the answers.
The answer to your last question was, have we, and I will use the word substantially complete, and why I say that is because we have, you know, a lift, I want to say our pit lift still exists. That money is in the budget. Again, is the exposure for going above the budget great? No, it's not. So, I will use the word substantially complete, because there are still punch list items that exist. Taking the playground surfaces, you know, independent of that, but again, the exposure on playground surfaces is what we put for a playground surface and the cost of that. And so, there is not the exposure that we're going, we're still opening roofs, and there could be something behind a wall that we don't anticipate that could cost us $1 million. That no longer exists. As, as it relates to the question about how many properties have we looked at, I am, and this is close, it might not be exact, I want to say that we have reviewed 17 properties within district boundaries and three outside of district boundaries. Of those 17 properties, there has been a handful that the district actually owns. We have talked about the Buberall property, which is located next to Century Power. We have talked about J.C. Fields. We have even talked about what if we were to put it at Withrow. There have been issues or questions that have come up that we did not believe as a, as a staff, that you could overcome, mainly zoning. Some of it was just at the adequacy of the amount of land that existed. There were obstacles that continue to present themselves in our 17-site search, or 20-site search, that don't seem to work in conjunction, in conjunction with putting a facility there. Can we use our existing facilities just to park buses? Maybe. What I would have to research is, and there's, and it's a, it's a multitude of things. I don't know if city ordinances would even allow that. I mean, we heard about that when we were discussing, or after we had discussed this canal property. If you have outdoor storage, I don't know what city ordinances would limit as far as the ability to park, and once those buses are removed, they're replaced with staff parking. And so, if we have a, let's just say, the high school building, and we're pulling, you know, that's our biggest lot, where, let's say, we're pulling 50 buses or minivans off of that lot, they're being replaced by employee cars. And do we have sufficient parking at our sites that would support the bus parking to accommodate that? Then it would be, where do we house maintenance of all of the equipment? And, and the staff that goes along with it, dispatch, you know, those, those sorts of people that are doing the work for our bus company behind the scenes, they would need an office to be housed in. Those are kind of the things that immediately come to mind. And let us remember that we, we contract the fleet, we don't own the buses. So, ultimately, if we were to bring a contractor in, and they said, this isn't an ideal situation for us, we're going to go and lease property, now we're back to the transferring of costs and paying the piper, of which we will now absorb in the general fund. So, is it a possibility? Maybe. Those are what I initially see right out of the chute as potential obstacles. And then, there's honestly our property and liability insurance, as far as having them spread out throughout our buildings. I don't know what it would do, if anything, but that would certainly be an area that I would have to look at, as far as security, you know, any of the damage to, what, what have you. Those would be my thoughts, as it relates to, can we park in different spots? Did I, what other question?
It was just about the transportation cost.
Thank you. So, our current contract, the way our current contract runs is, the rates that we receive, the time starts, you guys have heard me talk about the five-hour blocks, the clock starts on that five hours, let's say it's a morning route, the clock starts at the first stop on that morning route. It does not start when that bus leaves base. So, the location of the base, at least under our current contract, is irrelevant. It's when they pull up to the Patachek household, that's where it stops. And when they drop off at New Heights, or Salem, or Prep at the end of the day, that's where it ends. It's not, so it's dead time in between base to the first stop and base past the final stop. So, there is no additional busing cost, if you will, or, you know, time cost that we would pay for under the current contract that would be any different than what we're doing right now.
Thank you.
Director Lachlan?
Could you please clarify for me the, the approximate cost of remediation? Or projected, you know, cost for the current property?
The current property, we had had a construction, Kraus-Anderson, we had them walk the property as, as we were looking at it as, you know, is this an option that administratively we'd want to pursue? When they walked the property and, and developed the list of remediation, that list totaled over $4 million. Again, that wasn't necessarily touching, you know, the, the soil impact, and, and again, at least the one thing that is not disputed by anybody is that there is debris under the soil. And, and what would we need for soil corrections, if anything? That wouldn't be in that $4 million, but we would be looking at a $4 million list to, based on Kraus-Anderson's assessment.
Okay, thank you.
Director Pearson?
So, along those lines, at the proposed, how much would it cost to get that to a place where we would want it to be?
Well, when we had talked in closed session, we had talked about, you know, what would be, kind of what would it be if we had, we could do everything we want at all at once? If we looked at, okay, we need to extend the parking lot, you know, we want lights, heaters, blacktop, you know, just kind of what we had talked about with the Schenau property. And that dollar amount was higher, and then, that was, it was just, in my opinion, it was too much for the board, or it was, the direction was, go back and figure out, you know, kind of base. If we were to be able to open the doors tomorrow, what do we need? And that dollar amount is in the 1.3 to 1.4 range, as far as, which would then still fall under the bond proceeds. I mean, we're, we're right there, but it was, how do we make this work with the proceeds that we have left, without going farther than that?
And can it stay like that forever, or are there things that are going to have to be done?
Well, there's always things, I mean, you always have to do repair and maintenance on building. That's the advantage of having a building that's 15 years old, as opposed to having buildings that are, are much older. But, you know, if we were to look and say we would want blacktop, because this wouldn't be, this would be a gravel parking lot surface, and, and again, you, you guys walked it, you can kind of understand what I, what I'm talking about. And so, it would be, at some point, are we going to want blacktop, which is probably more ideal? Yes, there would need to be money now. Again, then it comes down to, do we use the money that the building makes to support it? Do we set aside capital? You know, how does that work? But, your answer is, is it ideal? No. Is it workable? Yes.
Okay. And the 6.3, that it might, that's what we're looking at, that all is, that amount you showed us?
I, my estimate is, we have about 6.5, and again, we would spend up to where those proceeds are gone.
Okay. And if we didn't decide to do anything, how long do we have to spend that bond money? We decided no on this property?
Well, you would have in perpetuity, but I would, I would respectfully request what we would be, what would be the intention. And the reason why I ask that is when, in August, when we had had the conversation about the Schenau property, Mike had specifically said, you know, maybe, let's throw, let's throw at the all-call. We did that with the early childhood building, it seemed to work. We've done that. And there's been no feedback. My concern with what if we just choose to wait, is I don't quite know if there's going to be a property we're waiting for.
Okay. Thank you.
Director Hepner?
One, one quick one. Do you anticipate that the site, the location would affect future bus bids? Does that enter into this?
I, you know, it's interesting- I, you know, it's interesting. I would say us having a facility impacts far greater than the potential location of where we're at. Meaning, it is viewed favorably by a contractor to know that there is a location that they can move on to as opposed to trying to have to shop for something that's near. Because again, that's, they have a bottom line cost, get transferred, whatever that is. That's going to affect their bid because now they're guessing, are we going to be stationed in White Bear? Are we going to be in Cottage Grove? And we've got to get that into our baseline bid to cover our costs. If they know the site, it's much easier for them to identify and give a, maybe a more favorable bid towards us because they can kind of hone in on, because they're not going to cover, they're not going to come in short for themselves. As far as our location, I, you know, since I've been with the district, and I want to say we've now been with Minnesota Central for eight years or more, I believe the contract has been structured where it's, where you do, you don't get charged for that deadhead time. I think if we wrote that in, I don't know how that could fluctuate, but I don't have a great answer for you, George. I believe the stronger answer or the more, the larger scope of it is truly having a facility versus not, as far as the impact to bids.
Okay. Director Stivlin?
So just trying to clarify with the funds, the 3.5 million was approved in the bond, and so that technically has to be used for a bus property purchase. Is that correct?
Correct, but I'd ask for a little bit of latitude on exactly 3.5. The way, you know, if it's a little bit more, if it's a little bit, like, if you were to look at the, and I'll just say the high school.
Oh, so it doesn't have to be exact?
No.
So we substantially close to 3.5?
Correct.
So if we came under a little?
Then we used something, I mean, we might have come under in Brookview and we spent a little bit more at the high school, but
Okay.
the materiality is not significant. Let's go that way.
The other part of that, what did you say, 6.5 million? That other 3 million?
Mm-hmm.
What flexibility do we have with those funds? I understand they can't be used for operating costs or general fund like that, but talk to us a little bit about what kinds of things could be done with those funds.
Whatever was identified in the review and comment.
What, explain what that means. Anything in the bond.
Whatever was approved in the bond. So back to, we can't, you know, like, could we, could we look at adding a wing to Lake Elmo? That was never a part of the voter-approved piece? That would not qualify to be able to use those funds. So the categories that were listed in the review and comment is what it would need to be used for.
What about the addition to Brookview that has been discussed?
We could not, we as a, you as a school board, we as a school district cannot independently make that decision. What would need to get done is there would be a few steps. We, modified review and comment would need to go back to the Department of Education, at which time they would need to decide, however they make their decisions, was it a material, was it a material change in what we asked our voters? So it's not our decision to make, we do a modified review and comment, we'd also have to talk, we'd also have to get approval from bond council back to what was the voter intent and are we still meeting the terms of that intent? So is it possible? Yes. We have zero control over what that decision would be.
But we would have a mechanism to go back to the state and ask for that permission or waiver?
Yes.
Approval?
Yes.
That would be something that could be done?
Yes.
Okay.
Good? Yep. Are you good, Sarah?
Um, I think so, yeah.
Okay. Director Patachak.
Sure. Continuing that discussion, just one step further, I'm not proposing at this point, you'd always have the alternative of giving those funds back to the taxpayers.
Yes, and I actually, if I didn't, I thought I said that earlier in my presentation, but maybe I did.
You may have, I may have missed it.
That is correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I did have one more.
Okay, are you done?
I can wait.
Oh, no, go ahead, go ahead, I can wait.
Why don't you finish?
You finish, sorry.
Well, mine always gets a little lengthy.
Well, that's why I want you to finish.
My comparison in contrast, because I think the search, and I commend you for that, and I think that's, from my vantage point, that's always due diligence. But my conclusion is, we're down to two properties, kind of speaking. And one is Stagecoach, and one is what we're seeing tonight on the proposal. So I kind of want to go what I like about Stagecoach, and then if I neglect to do it, you can tell me how that compares to what's in front of us.
Okay.
And Mr. Stefan's presentation to us, although a little unorthodox doing that through the open forum, plus he supplied some materials, and so I'm looking a little bit at that. And, but it seems to me, as I listened to everything that was being said, total amount we've got to work with is approximately $6.5 million.
Correct.
And so I'm saying, if it costs less than that, great. Because I'm saying if we got extra, I don't think taxpayers are going to ever be disappointed if we say, here, here's some money back.
They're usually not.
And I, and I've been in districts that have done that, and your credibility increases a great deal with that. So if you can save money, great. Now, having said that, a couple of things that Mr. Stefan pointed out, and I don't know the other proposed property well enough, so fill me in, and some other board members have covered that a little bit. First of all, a couple of things they do is roughly right now on that property, they can park 100 buses. I think that's the number they use.
On the Stagecoach property?
Yes.
When you say buses, are you talking full-size? Are you talking minivans? Are you, because we have more than just full-size buses, so I'm trying to understand the scope of what you're saying, Mike.
Yeah. And I'm saying, I'm going on Mr. Stefan's work.
Okay.
And you just glued me in on something that I don't know. It depends on the size of the buses. But why I use the number of 100, because I think one of the other advantages, he was talking of the present sites, is they also already have plug-ins for 100 vehicles. And it seems to me that's an advantage. That's an investment that's already been done for that property. Another advantage of the property, and you'll have to compare these to the others then, is that they have 14,000 gallon tank and fueling station was added by the district in 2008.
And that fueling tank is portable.
Okay. So that could go anywhere.
That, yeah.
And that's ours?
That's ours.
Okay. And I think the other thing that he pointed out about the property is that in 1999, they added a bus lane or a turning lane was added to the property off of Stagecoach Trail. So that's an advantage, it's already there. And then another thing that he talked about is that there was an additional 1.4, five acres for sale by the City of Oak Park, and it's adjacent to the property.
That's correct.
So there's a little bit of land for addition to that area. Now, I understand from some of my colleagues who made the tour of this facility, and I hadn't heard that before, there is some issue about drainage with that property.
I would actually say there's significant issue with drainage. There is flooding. I guess the part that was a little bit astonishing to me, quite honestly, is, you know, I assume to, and I know that, you know, there continues to be rotted doors because those continue to be replaced. I mean, doors don't survive water that long. It leaks into the office spaces and that sort of thing. I think the most compelling piece to me about the flooding is that Minnesota Central actually, and there was another company on there called Cage, they actually plowed during rain. They used plows during rain to push the water because of the amount of flooding that happened during rain. So even when you think snow melt and, you know, maybe there's various times during the course of a year, that naturally we look at, like the river, you look at flooding in the spring, this is happening during rainfall. So I think it's a pretty, that, again, that part caught me a bit off guard and was a bit astonishing to me.
And I think Mr. Stefan's son, and he ran that company
They did.
called Cage.
Mm-hmm.
And if you go there, there's this huge plow that they have a patent on, that they use for that purpose. And again, I did not hear of the flooding or the drainage issues, but I'm saying, that's what they, they were manufacturing and selling from that. And having gone through some of those buildings, I do agree with you, I'm not sure they can be reconditioned or if you just knock them down and
Start over.
Maybe Kraus Anderson could talk about that. I think the present facility, there's no question in my mind, when they service buses, they can only do two at a time. And it's very crowded quarters, like you said. But here's, here's the question I come to. Mr. Stefan, at this point, is saying, he told us his asking price was 2.8.
That was, that was his last offer, correct? When the whole process started three years ago, it was 5.
Yeah. But I'm saying that's
The latest is 2.8, correct.
And, and the Gazette carried it, that's what he told us publicly.
Correct.
That's what he's asking.
Yes.
And so I'm saying, if we were to go and look at that property, and say we would touch base with the City of Oak Park Heights, which he was pretty convinced they would sell the property, that's another 155,000. For improvements, you don't, you don't yet have, if you do the math, at 4 million, but you come awful close to it.
For improvements above and beyond the purchase price?
For what I'm saying, that it gives you that room, I believe if you take the 6,500 that we have to work with, regardless of which property, and the purchase price that he's asking, not that we would come back with a counter that said, okay, here's your 2.8, you've got a latitude in there about 33,700,000. So I'm saying there is range in there. Okay. So I mean, those are my questions when I do the comparison and contrast. Do you want to contrast that with the other property and what they already have and what they need? Do they have the plug-ins already?
They do not. That would be part of the improvements that we would make, and you can run. I know one of the questions that actually came to me as the board members that did tour that property identified as far as, you know, the plug-ins, the power and the lights. Though, between the power and, the powers were, is about an estimated 180,000, and then if, to add lights to that structure is 90, and the question was, can we do that on gravel, which we can? And that would be part of the, the improvements to the parking lot that I had identified.
And this present facility at Stagecoach, most of what they're using is blacktop.
Sort of.
I think it's important, Stagecoach, actually, it doesn't house 100 buses, it's 80. 80 buses for Stagecoach.
Yeah. Because that's, you know, you, again, we, when looking at a facility, essentially you need a couple hundred spots for parking. We have, and I'm just throwing numbers between 100 and 120 buses. The mini buses are another 40, you then have the vans. I mean, so you're talking a fleet of close to 200 and employee parking of close to 200 in Stagecoach, it is not, we would need to buy the additional city land, and then there certainly would not be, I don't believe, room, even with the Cage, all of Sid's property, I don't believe that there would be, it'd be tight, and I don't know that there would, I know there wouldn't be room for growth. It would be tight to fit, you know, that amount of vehicles on property, on site.
You good, Mike?
Yes, I think so.
Okay. Director Lachlan?
I just had two questions, but Dr., or, well, Dr. or Director Patachak, I wanted to follow up, I think I was not tracking your, your line of thinking with your math. So you had said the, because I'm all for yes, if we have extra money, right? But I think with, when you add in the remediation that would be necessary, plus the purchase price, that brought me to 6.8.
Mm-hmm. And I would agree, that's why I was careful to say that's his asking price.
Okay. All right. I heard, I thought I heard another number. Okay. I guess my other question, and I know it's hard to quantify, but I, as we know, and it's a statewide problem just in terms of shortage of bus drivers, and in addition to the increased safety conditions, it sounds like just in terms of, especially the mechanics to be able to have that access. But do you think, or have you heard any feedback from Minnesota Central that a new site could in fact be an incentive for potential drivers?
They are in the room, and I'm very hesitant to call them up
Oh.
because that's just cruel to do to people to hold, I mean, you heard people get nervous.
That was not a plan. Because that's a real, that's a, my kids have taken the bus their whole education career. There is, to me, next to teachers, bus drivers, and are the unsung heroes, and I'm dead serious with this, there is, the safety issue to me cannot be overstated. And the safety and the treatment and all of it in terms of the people that are carrying our children is, to me, not something that we take lightly. And knowing that there's a shortage and knowing that impact that it has to the daily operations of a district and the huge impact that it has to families, that, you know, that's an element that I'm, you know, that came to mind as a piece of consideration.
In talking with one of the staff members when I was there the other day, you know, it's kind of, well, do you run the risk of losing, let's say, our longstanding employees or old timers, if you will, because now they're maybe driving farther from Stagecoach to Hudson Road? And they're not, you know, when they, when you have breaks in the day, they're just not interested in adding another handful of miles to their, to their trip every day. So are you going to lose those people? On the flip side of that, you have a major artery with 94, and, you know, and a significant amount of staff, or so I was told, are coming from Wisconsin that helps support our district in, as far as driving to mechanics. Does that actually open us up? Because as Woodbury grows, and as that interstate, you know, getting across, that actually could help with recruitment. Not that, I want to presume how anybody views their work environment as far as whether they choose to be employed there or not, but there's certainly a different feel in one property versus the other.
Okay, thank you.
Director Pelletier?
So I was going to touch upon this in the comment section, but I'll do a comment and then a question. So I had the opportunity to view both sites in detail and spent quite some time, don't even know what day it was, Wednesday, Tuesday, I'm not sure, but one of the days this week, and spent quite some time with the gentleman who I won't point out in the room, who was a mechanic. And, you know, I appreciate your comment about, Director Lachlan, about the safety and the bus drivers and how important that is. Equally so is the ability for our mechanics to do their work. And I was shocked at what I witnessed, that our, the condition of the building that our mechanics have to work, to have to work in. I was shocked, and to me, that, that is so far and wide, it was eye-opening to me. I'm so very thankful that I was able to see it. So I'm wondering if you could maybe speak, speak to that in detail? What, what does that look like? And maybe if you wouldn't mind talking about how you have, you can't, if you cannot work on the back of the bus, you have to pull it all the way in, you can't walk around the bus at all. Just maybe speak to those conditions a little bit.
Absolutely. And the board members that were on the tour Monday morning would have seen when the garage, when, it was during the daytime, so it was staffed, fully staffed and working. They were, you had the full mechanic staff working on the buses, and there were two full-size buses that were pulled into the slots. And there's a handful of items it presents. Again, it's the, there's multiple components of efficiency that come into play in that, you know, you open up the hood of the bus and you can't have someone else working on the backside of the bus. There isn't, like, tools, they're running two different areas, different, they store some in a box outside because there's no room to store parts or, and so there's built-in inefficiencies between having multiple sites and just trying to make things work and then not being able to do multiple things at one time. You have to either complete or, you know, the first part of a project before you can move to the second. And again, that's still not addressing the component of having individuals working outside. And again, that's still not addressing the component of having individuals working outside on that all year long. Then that garage, there isn't a, again, a lift to get things up in the air. I mean, that's a piece of it. I would guess that would make their job a little easier. If I were to look, and I'm not going to presume, I, you know, it's funny, I had done an internship when I was in college with a diesel mechanic garage who happened to service international buses. So I too have some experience with that end of the industry. Anyway, when you have the congruent, the attached, you have your lead and all of the tools, all of the mechanics within essentially eyesight, if certainly not a few steps away from each other, that in and of itself provides an efficiency that you can move around and do what you need to do. Plus, it's attached to the administrative side, the driver's side, all of it is one building as opposed to multiple buildings. And has storage for parts above and a lift and so.
And the other building has, so there's not a lift at the current facility, correct?
In the current facility, no.
And the, so the facility that we're looking at right now, it's not a lift, what is it? A hair-over-the-head type of extravaganza?
That moves, that you can, yeah, it's like a hook.
Okay, okay.
And it actually is a seven-ton.
And that is what we kind of discuss that with the people who know what they're talking about, and I think that was of benefit to them as well.
So clarify that, because I thought that was just for lifting motors and things. I thought he said you couldn't lift a bus with.
Well, you, I mean, you'd be hanging, it wouldn't be where it's balanced, you know what I mean, as far as this?
I don't.
I know, too. There's a couple people grinning back there.
Tim!
It sounds like.
I would love to have you up here to help me with this one.
Thanks for being here so long, by the way.
I do.
Hello.
You're on TV.
I think you understand the questions they were.
So the new building has an overhead crane.
Thank you.
And being a seven-ton, that can lift 90% of the units we have, the whole thing. You'd never lift the whole thing. You'd lift the front or the back up and then put them on the three-foot jack stands, which allows you to actually do engines and transmissions and everything else that at our current facility, we send everything out. Everything gets sent out. We don't do it because we don't have the space. There's no cranes, there's no pit. The new facility, I believe that one has an in-floor pit, which also eliminates us from having to jack up the buses. You can do everything just walking underneath and reach them. It's a lot faster and easier and safer than being on a jack or a jack stand.
Thank you. See, the question I have here, and I want to compare apples to apples in that, is that, one, we're looking at the present facility on Stagecoach, and we're saying, and I don't think you're going to get any disagreement, the present facility for serving buses is inadequate. Now, granted, we've talked about in the abstract, it's going to take about $4 million. What I don't know, how much of that money goes for a new mechanical area to work on buses? And whether it's going underneath or whether it's lifting them in the air? And something that's adequate, maybe not necessarily Cadillac, but usable, serviceable, and comparable to the other property.
I'll first ask, and Director Patachak, I will address your question, but if, as long as Tim is here, if you have any further questions, otherwise I will let him go back to the seat, make him stand there.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you. What is in, as far as observation, existing conditions? What I am seeing, Director Patachak, is siding, roof, exterior garage doors, electrical, emergency eyewash stations.
Any drainage?
Flammable waste trap.
But the part I'm curious about, Kristin, are they knocking down the present building and just putting something new there? Or is this an attempt to repair those two buildings that are adjacent to the training?
It would be, there was no conversation about, let's start fresh. This would be trying to repair what exists. And again, it wouldn't be to add additional lifts or those sorts of things. We're just new furnace. Again, there's a lot of electrical, because there's power issues in the office building, there's the ceiling, there's windows, there's, that's where your money's going. It's not going to, it's not going to do, like, the lift or things like that. It's truly repairable.
Let's keep just working down and wrap this up. So Director Pearson?
Thank you. So it's no surprise to you, I'm struggling with the price. And I know we're not deciding one or the other, but we kind of are looking at one or the other. Any idea on the current? We know on the proposed, what's the need and what's the, we hope to have someday. What about on the current? What would need to be done and what would be nice to do someday? Any projection?
You know, and I appreciate the question, and I know you asked Mr. Wilger this when we were on tour, and it wasn't, this list was not designed to prioritize, and so I would not be in a position without us trying to say what's absolutely none needed to be done. Again, we heard about electrical power issues going on and off in there, we've heard about the flooding. We've, obviously, you have to do the emergency eyewash stations and the fire alarm upgrades, and so that sort of stuff would almost need to be immediate, but unfortunately, from honestly Monday on, because we aren't specifically talking about purchasing this property, this list, and I would almost be in front of you as far as prioritizing, much like we do with our long-term facility maintenance list, I don't know how much flexibility there is as far as can we delay? I mean, again, do you wait to install an exhaust, an exhaust air system? I just, because we're not talking, we haven't, we looked at estimates as far as, is this a property that we want to pursue? But right now, tonight, is this a purchase agreement we want to enter into?
You good, Director Pearson?
No, but I don't have any other questions.
All right. Director Hepner, are you good?
Yeah, and I like Mike's approach. That's exactly what I did on my sheet. I did a Stagecoach site and a Lawson site based on the tour that Tim and Chris Ann gave us at the site. I think that's a great way to approach it.
All right. Director Stivlin?
Could you just describe a little bit how that $4 million number was, how did we come to that list? What was the process?
We didn't. Kraus Anderson did. We, the request was made. I instructed Tony that this was a piece of property that I believe the board at least has interest in looking at. We have had actually three closed sessions about it. So that was, the assumption was to prepare for one of those closed sessions. And Kraus Anderson just went out and did the walkthrough, and it wasn't, it was just, what do you see? Again, because that's their expertise. What do you see that we would need to fix or remediate on this property?
So that's why the assumption was made that the buildings, the two buildings that are now empty would be refurbished. But that's why you, I think you just were speaking to Director Patachak and said that that wasn't, it was not considered that one of the buildings might be knocked down or something else. This was just a list of what it would take to refurbish both buildings and everything else that might be on the site.
And again, not looking at, you know, should we need to do earthwork? I honestly don't know if, as I look, there's water control, there's miscellaneous crack repair replacement, seal and repair remainder of parking throughout site. I'm not sure it actually addresses the drainage issue with the earthwork that would need to be done to address the flooding.
Agreed, agreed.
Nor does it include developing that other lot, correct?
Correct, I mean, yes, that is correct. That would, but, and in the purchase price of that lot, I think Director Patachak had said it was like $155,000.
$55,000, yeah. That's what I heard. All right. Director Patachak? Kind of what I'm thinking here, because this is a very expensive proposal, both ways, regardless of which one you choose, but I want to be very careful. Would it help if the board consider bringing Kraus Anderson in and show us what they're going to do or what the cost is and whether that's, you know, working off the maps? Okay, this is what we think the estimate would be to solve the wetlands or the drainage. This is what would bring the two mechanical areas that we work on up to similarity. So this is what you have in one, this is what you have in the other.
You posed that as a question to me, and to me, I think it's a question to the board.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's more of a board decision. If you need that, Mike, you can certainly, you know, ask as part of this going forward. So, any other questions for Kristin? Great, thank you very much. So, can I get a motion to approve the property purchase agreement for the transportation terminal at 11530 Hudson Boulevard, North and Lake Elmo?
I will make a motion to, yes.
All right, is there a second?
I will second.
All right. Now we have any discussion? Director Stivlin?
Okay. I think that the line of questioning that Director Patachak has shared with us has kind of alluded to something that is painfully obvious to me, that we cannot consider purchasing this property because we have a viable and reasonable proposal for another property that we're already using and has significant number of advantages, as George has on his pro list right here in front of me. We have not seriously considered the current site. There are lots of conjecture and questions and possibles and mayblies and, well, it might be this and that and the other, but we don't know definitively what we're dealing with with the current site. And we were just given in our last meeting an offer of 2.8 million to buy it, or he offered to extend our lease for 10 years. So that is an option as well. I understand that owning the property gives us benefits in terms of negotiating our contracts and whatnot, but expending that amount of money costs us something as well. I mean, that's not free. Just because it's not in our operating cost doesn't mean it's free. It still costs us money. And we have a two-year contract left with our bus company, so we really don't need to do anything right now. We could just leave it like it is. And I think buying this property is an irresponsible expense, and there is a very good likelihood, in my opinion, that it won't even work because there's these two huge contingencies that we don't know anything about.
Okay, thank you. I might as well just keep going down the road. Director Hepner, anything you would like to add?
On my list, the Stagecoach site, employees parking on the road despite Washington County objections, flooding in shops and sewer backups, concrete is sinking on this location, mechanics working in two close quarters, and there is no lift available. There's a lack of rooms for employee training, there's a more central, is a more central location than the other. Buses lack the ability to drive in and out. Electrical system is not appropriate, breakers continually trip out. And that's not what I found, that's listening to Tim and Chris Ann talk to us. At the Lawson site, five in-and-out stalls and a separate wash bay. Currently, we hire out for washing the buses. Various offices at Lawson and one large meeting room, so all mechanics are all, bus drivers could meet together. Mechanics would have space to work, including a lift available. It's a clean newer facility without need for immediate inside repairs. Employee parking will need to be added on the north end of the Lawson site, and that's kind of what I wrote down.
Great, thank you. Director Pearson?
Your way may be better, but I, we are old house people in our house, and so we buy old houses, and they work, but they're not perfect, and we fix them up as we go, and that's just how I can't stop thinking about this, that it's really a hard decision, and I don't know what's best, but it's what I keep coming to.
Thank you very much. Director Pelletier?
I coupled, I struggle with this for a few days, given the price of it, and the location was another concern of mine until I really delved in and talked to employees at the site, talked to mechanics at the site. The issues that there are at the current site are real. They, the drainage is a real issue. From what I have been told, they're consistently band-aiding it, you know, so you can't say, oh, we're going to get that done, and then it's a done deal. They're actually, it's a continual problem. So I, that, the many, many issues that I see at the site compared to this current site that we're looking at, I think, you know, what's being disingenuous, I think doing our due diligence is doing what's right, is you weigh these two, and it's absolutely no-brainer to me. And I come up with a story, an anecdote to this, and some years ago, Stillwater Area High School was at the Cub facilities location, Cub Foods. And I don't know the whole story or many of the details, but someone mentioned this to me, and it really struck me. They had to decide, the school board at the time had to decide, do I fix her up, fixer-upper, or do we sell it for a dollar? The school board at the time sold it for a dollar. They got a little bit of criticism on that. They found out that the millions of dollars of improvements that this site would have had to, they would have had to incur, did not even, did not even take parking into account. So when I look at things like this, to say, what is it going to take to fix this thing up with the very real knowledge that it might continually be a problem? I don't like spending money on something like a bus garage. I want, it's one of those necessary evils. It's like a microwave. But that's what I have to say, that's what has stirred my decision, and thank you.
All right.
One more, I'm sorry. Can't possibly say enough about the safety component with our mechanics. And I have to say that a gentleman who comes here and sits here for four hours, you can't say he doesn't believe strongly that safety matters, and I want to thank you for doing that for us. Thank you.
Director Loughlin?
Well, Director Pelletier said exactly what I was, you know, that's for me, a non-negotiable, the safety issue for both the staff and the mechanics, and ultimately, you know, that has an impact, I think, on our students. I think the board, I'll, only speaking for myself, I'll own my part, I think part of the reason why we're looking at this price is because the board has waited so long to invest and perhaps done it at a time where we were closer to that three and a half million. Luckily, we have the funds available through the interest accrued from the bond, and I look at it as, you know, dollars that we can recoup from this and put back into our classrooms. We know there is no shortage of needs, whether it's a social worker, school psych, or a teacher, or paras. And if this money that we can generate, the revenue, can go to staff, that's going to directly benefit our kids, that's where I'm at right now.
Thank you very much. Director Patachak? Couple things. Sure. One, I'm never in a hurry to spend money. And so it's like if I'm debating to fix up my house or to buy a new house, I go slow. And I believe that's a good rule of thumb. Here's what I look at. Right now, we have roughly, I think, 6,500 dollars, or 6.5, wish it was 6,500, to work with. The asking price could be lower if we get into a bargaining mode. No promises it would be lower, but could be. That leaves a difference of $3.7 million. Now, I don't know, but I would like to see Kraus Anderson come to us and say, what can I do for 3.7? Or what can I do 3.5? Or what can I do for 3 million? And a number of the shortcomings have been pointed out in that present property. And so I'd like to hear that, I'd like to know that. That's more information. Most things I do, I always cry for more information because I want to be able to make a fair comparison. And it might be another four hours you got to come and wait and hear us, but after it's all said and done, are the mechanics in a safe position? Do they have a comparable situation? Again, I'm not promising Cadillac facilities, but I am promising better facilities than are available there right now. And I would agree, having been there, I would say this, I could walk around both buses, and I did that, but I'm a pretty skinny guy, you know, so I could do that. It's not acceptable the way it is. But I'm saying 3.7 is a lot of dollars to But I'm saying 3.7 is a lot of dollars to make it workable. That's my position.
Great. My thoughts on this are a couple of things. One, I agree with you, Director Patachuk, that anytime we can return funds to taxpayers, it increases our credibility. In that same vein, I wish to commend Director Hoheisel and the bonding company we use that took 3.5 million and turned it into 6.3 million. So I think our taxpayers should really be excited about that because that was something well-managed and well-done. I think both sites have municipal issues. If we have to buy property from the city of Oak Park Heights, that in and of itself will also require municipal approval, so I think it's good practice to put a contingency in there that, you know, we don't want to purchase this, or we're not going to sign anything without them getting the municipal requirements. If they don't, we all may be back here and looking at getting Kraus Anderson to come forward and give us that. So I just think, at this point in time, we value our buildings, we take pride in our buildings, we value our employees, and we make sure that we give them the best that we can under the circumstances that we have. And I think it goes without saying that what is at Stagecoach, we have been working with for a number of years, and asking our employees to do and work there under conditions that I think if we can do better, we should do better. So with that said, I think we're...
I just have one more thing?
Sure.
Sorry, I know it's late.
Well, yeah, go ahead. I just don't want to keep going down this...
I just really want to reiterate that we have a viable offer, and as much as Kristin shared with us earlier, that all this work in three years of time have been put into trying to find a solution. We have a viable offer that could potentially work really well, and we're not even considering it. We really are not even considering, we haven't had a closed session to discuss it, we haven't come back with alternative options, we have not explored what might take to, you know...
I appreciate that, Director Stivlin.
We aren't being thorough in our process of considering it.
I think we all understand where we're at. I understand you're saying we haven't. I think, for me personally, we have, and we've had three closed sessions where we've talked about this site. So with that said, I appreciate where everyone's at in their position, they have to vote on this. So Barb, could you do a roll call vote?
Board Chair Lehman?
Aye.
Vice Chair Pelletier?
Aye.
Treasurer Pearson?
Nay.
Director Lachlan?
Aye.
Director Hepner?
Aye.
Director Patachuk?
No.
Director Stivlin?
No.
You have four ayes in three days.
Thank you, the motion passes. Final thing are the board member reports, the board chair report. I really don't have anything other than, we had a learning session last night, and I would encourage the community to watch it. It answers a lot of questions about our budgeting process, some of the constraints that we are looking at going forward with our budget, as well as a really good discussion on class sizes and how changes to class sizes, as much as we think would help, sometimes don't really accomplish a lot. So I know that we, as a board, are continuing to look at it. In addition, I think the direction was that we're going to try to do monthly learning sessions on budgeting, and so we're well-aware of opportunities that, for revenue, that may come up, as well as expenses that we're looking at going forward. So I would encourage the community to be aware of that, and it is open to the public as well as being online. Board member reports, can I start with you, Director Patachuk?
Sure. Although, let's get the hard one out of the way first. Most of the work that I and others have done have been legislatively, and I think that's a good news. We had a delegation of administrators, of board members, of parents, of special ed teachers who went and took advantage of the C Day at the Capitol, and we met with the vast majority of our legislators in one-to-one conversation. And the two things that we pushed the most were pensions and cross subsidies. I thought they listened, I thought they were receptive. Of course, the proof always comes in the pudding. The good news in many ways legislatively is that, for those of you, many of you know this already, the pension bill went through and was passed with bipartisan support in the Senate. The governor has already spoken that he supports this, and in his projected budget, he allot money for that purpose, so it's really kind of up to the House. But it's very, very encouraging, and typically what we're hearing from legislators, this is going to happen. So that part is good news. The cross subsidy, it's a non-funding year. The good news is that two things that I think are positive in the right direction, but it's a long way from making it happen, because what we're asking for is for the state to increase their share of special education funding. The good news is that the governor had included that in his budget, and what he asked for for funding for special education, it's a drop in the bucket, but we'll take it. It's $17 million. For many of us, that's not a drop, but when you realize the need is over $600 million, it is. And then he asked for 43 million over the 2021 biennium. Now, in addition to that, Senator Pratt introduced a bill to create a study group that would look specifically at special education. So that's also very, very encouraging. Couple other events, though, on the legislative front is that on the following Monday, the original C Day was on a Thursday, George and I attended the Minnesota School Boards Association. The morning was spent listening to presentations on all of the things that they valued as important, including the two I've mentioned. And then the afternoon was spent visiting again with legislators. And then the third thing is that Shelley and I attended the regional meeting for C, and their executive director, who's also one of our lobbyists, talked about legislative issues. So all three of those, I think, are positive actions. I think they will produce results, sometimes not as quick as we like, but that's what the legislative committee has been up to.
Thank you, Mike. Director Lachlan?
The finance working group is, so Director Pearson and Director Pelletier, I will be sending out emails to try to find a date where we can meet with Director Hoheisel, and just kind of, based on the feedback that we heard at the work session, talk about what we want the systems and structures to look like going forward around our meetings, as well as what Chair Lehman had talked about, maybe a standing meeting as a whole board to dig in deeper to some of the topics that board members would like more information about.
Thank you very much. Director Pelletier?
I just have to say, I forgot to say this during the presentation about the bus, about the terminal, but I ran into Principal Fields this week, and he commented that if it passes, and again, we've got, we don't know, we've got to talk to the city, and there are some things to flush out, but it will also be able to be used as an evacuation site for the kids. So I wish I would have brought that up earlier, but that's, absolutely was a wonderful thing to hear, so another benefit. The community engagement team, we met this week. We received, like was stated, 48 applications, I believe, 48. We do have to whittle them down to 25. We really are going to work hard. I have nothing but full faith and trust in my colleagues on this, in this group, who is Mike Patachuk and Shelley Pearson, to, we're really going to be intentional about, you know, bringing fresh eyes into it, people from all different walks of life. And good things are coming. That's a lot of work that we're embarking upon, and I've actually been contacted by more than a few people with regards to the bell time discussion, so more on that later. But I think some people are still wanting to kind of have continual discussions about that. So I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Director Pearson?
Nothing.
Thank you. Director Hepner?
I did attend the student walkout that Annabelle mentioned, and I just wanted to say, as I was quickly trying to count, there were about 1,300 kids that walked out. There was a playing of taps, they read the 17 names, there were moments of silence, it was a very serious, respectful, there were a few community members there, a few staff, but I thought it was very well-done and very appropriate, obviously. Mike mentioned the MSBA day at the Capitol. Just a couple of quick things. Probably the most contentious that things got when, her name is Erickson, I forget...
Sandra.
Sandra Erickson spoke about a five-star rating system based strictly on MCA test results. And that did not go over very well with the board members who were there, kind of throwing up their hands, saying, how does it align with ESA? How does it align with world's best workforce? Why do we need another rating system? And obviously, since it's based just on those test results, it didn't go over very well. Second thing was Senator Gazelka made just a blanket statement, no gun control measures would pass this legislature. And it's just so hard to watch a statement like that being made at that time when bills haven't all been vetted, but he just said nothing on gun control would pass the legislature. Last thing, I did, when I was meeting with Representative Lohmer, I did run into the yearbook editor and English teacher, Lori Hansen. She was there with two students, Abby Banks and Hannah Sween, and they were part of 28 students from six high schools who were lobbying for Senate File 1562 and House File 1501, which are being called the Minnesota New Voices Act. And they're reacting to the 1988 Supreme Court decision that says public school newspapers are subject to a lower level of First Amendment protection than independent student expression. And these two gals, Abby Banks and Hannah Sween, are going to be next year's print editors for the Pony Express, and so obviously have something they want to say, and Representative Lohmer was meeting with them. That's it.
Thank you. Director Stivlin?
I don't have anything.
Great. The only thing I wanted to follow up with, one of the things when we were at the Capitol, obviously, school safety was a big concern, and we had a nice discussion with Senator Housley and Representative Lohmer, Representative Detmer, and also Senator Kent about, we applaud any money that can go for school safety, but we like it to not have any strings attached to it with regards to how the school spends it, and we really want it to go to mental health, training, and also mental health issues, because I think most people understand that a lot of these issues are as a result of that, so...
Tom, if I can add one point that stuck with me, and I think everybody else who was there, they talked about, the bills were kind of leaning toward closing and making a fort out-of-gear facility, but they quoted one law enforcement officer who has said they have found that 95% of the shooters at schools were people that they knew. So you can build all those kind of walls you want, but that's not where the main problem is coming from. Thank you.
With that, I said last name, it's just a motion, we're just going to adjourn. So we are adjourned.